I did that on my dead.
Welcome to Lancaster City Council Meeting. Let's get started. City Clerk?
Councilmember Authority Member Johnson, ma'am.
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vice Chair Crist.
Present.
Mayor Chair Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Move to excuse Johnson.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Housing Authority? Call it to order. Roll call please.
Authority Member Harvey, present. Ma'am?
Present.
Smith?
Here.
Vice Chair Crist?
Here.
Chair Zetto, we have a quorum.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Turn it back over to the Mayor. Thank you. The invocation tonight is with Pastor Robert Enos at Great Works Christian Center.
Thank you. Father, your word tells us that when the righteous earn authority, the people rejoice. But when a wicked man rules, the people groan. I for one rejoice in Lancaster. I rejoice over this city because righteousness rules in this city. And righteousness will continue to rule in this city. So I pray, Father, first for this city, that you would move exponentially in every area and every way, touching each and every individual that calls this place home, lifting us up to a higher and better place in you. I pray also for tonight's events in this city council. I pray that you would move, that your spirit would be here, and that, Father, your peace and your joy would rule and reign in this room, Lord Jesus, that everything that happens here today would bring glory to your name. I again thank you for what you're doing in our city. I thank you for our mayor and our city council. I thank you for everyone that makes this city run and operate the way it does with excellence. And I lift your name, Jesus, in this place. I lift your name, Jesus, high. And in your gracious, precious name, Jesus, we pray. And everyone said, amen.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor? I mean no disrespect, but I'm a member of the doubting, I'm a member of the-
Then take your turn. Sit down.
I'm happy to in a moment.
Take your turn. Sit down.
I'm a member of the doubting community, not the faith community.
Please remain standing. Place your hand over your heart for an expression of faith.
Everybody place your right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
So is that a no? No, no respect for the doubting community in the Antelope Valley?
Listen, I've been in that jail. It's a terrible place. Just stop. A long time ago, folks. It was-
At least a couple of weeks.
Bishop, did you want to do your presentation now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that'd be great.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, the Honorable City Council and all of the staff, thank you for the privilege of coming before you. And what we want to do today, if I could, we have, I think, three young'uns. And we have, as you already know, a mentoring program. And this mentoring program reaches throughout the Antelope Valley to help kids to move those grades up and help those kids to stay out of trouble from fighting at school and other places. So that's what we're doing. And in August, we're going to Washington. We're taking 22 kids to Washington DC to have them to do a memorial march on, in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King's 50 year I Have a Dream speech. And then on the 13th of September, we'll be coming to you again and asking you to be a part if you can, that we're having a march here with about 1,000 kids out of the school system that will be doing the same thing as we're doing in Washington. In addition to that, we're going to honor Caesar Chavez for the 20 years that he did as a service to getting jobs. Now, I wasn't supposed to talk that long because Mark is going to be uptight with me because I didn't promise him I'm not going to be that long. So I'd like if I- If I could, the young lady who was in charge of this whole program for us, Ms. Gwen Cole, and she'll present the kids that are going to speak to us.
Thank you, Bishop. Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate the time that you have given us. The name of our program is the Livingstone Cathedral of Worship Pen and Pencil Program. Pen standing for penitentiary, pencil standing for education. Today, we have some packages in front of you to give you a lot of detail of the information about not only our march, but who we are and what we've been doing. If you would just quickly turn to the third page. It states on there the overview for the pen and pencil program and the theme for our coming march in September that's named "I Am the Dream," Se Puede Vivir. It can be lived. And with our community leaders, we have come up with that theme together to stand hand in hand on September 13th. Today, I'd like to introduce you to some young people that have been in our program for almost seven months. And they want to talk to you today about what, one, the march means to them and also what the pen and pencil program means to them since they've been in the program. So I'd first like to introduce both, I first like to, come on up here. Deidre Harold and Jayah, come on, Ward, come on up. And while they're coming up, can our mentors in the pen and pencil program please stand? We have a few of them here. Can you guys give them a hand? So today, I'm introducing Ms. Deidre, and she's going to talk to you about the pen and pencil.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Adrian Harold. I am 17. And I am currently taking the pen and pencil program. Although I am new to this program, I feel I've learned so much more than I would normally learn in my, normally learn in my high school classes. I never really experienced any racial inequality growing up. I've been fortunate enough to have a very culturally diverse group of friends who would love me, just for me. But sadly, the world does not like my group of friends. The pen and pencil program taught me, taught me that I shouldn't just accept the status quo put upon me just because of the race of my skin. I should try to approach those who don't understand in a more positive matter than a brute matter because if you're not positive and kind, you really won't get anywhere. And also, I would like to be positive to anyone I come into contact with, no matter race or gender. And pen and pencil to me means, pen and pencil to me means rational equality because when you're positive, your mind can bring the whole world together. And that is what we're going to do exactly in Washington. Thank you.
Thank you for having me, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Jayah Ward, and I really like the pen and pencil program. It teaches me a lot of African-American history that I don't get to learn in school. African-American history is important to me. If it wasn't for African-Americans who fought for our equal rights such as Martin Luther King Jr., Rosa Parks, and Harriet Tubman, I would not be here speaking to you today. I'm so happy I go to the pen and pencil program. The pen and pencil program allows me to learn more about history and where I came from. And it makes me proud to be who I am today. Thank you. I'm so happy I'm going to Washington.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you also very much for allowing us. And the POP program, the first P says pen, the second P says pencil. Pen or pencil. And pen simply means penitentiary. But the pencil means education. Can I leave this with you just as a symbol of, you'll see to it-
That we stay in that family.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So- So Henry, when, when is the Lancaster event?
The march in, in here in Lancaster will be on the 13th of September. 13th of September, that's a Friday, and the buses will be going out to the schools and picking up. We are looking for at least 1,000 youngsters. And we will be speaking over at the courthouse area. So we're going to talk to the court and see where they will let us stand to speak in honor of those two great men.
Are we going to let Stan come?
Listen, Mayor, you promised me you were going to be nice today. That's what you do. Any other question?
No, I just-
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Henry. We have a presentation from Cal Water. Are we going to do the, you wanted me to do something else first? The what?
You're open the public hearing for the PH1?
Oh, that's right. Okay. Let's open the public hearing regarding PH1, hear the staff report from product manager, who used to be an intern, and now she's a project manager. Wow.
All thanks to Mark.
Wow.
Could you say that for the mic? It didn't pick that up.
All thanks to the best city manager in the history of the world. So we have a PowerPoint.
Shame on you, Shannon.
Mayor Paris, City Council members, thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight to come before you and present the property-based improvement district. This has come before you a number of times before, but tonight, we're ready for the voting. So this will be the last time you'll hear from me for a while. We've got a PowerPoint that'll be coming up momentarily. As you're all aware, we've devoted significant time and resources to the downtown area for the past couple of years. We've transformed from what we had in 2010 to this beautiful thing we see today. We've attracted 53 new businesses. Revenue has increased 116% since the year before this specific plan was adopted, which is 2007, and we've seen great success. But with this growth has also come the need for increased services, such as maintenance, security, and promotions for the downtown businesses. So a property-based improvement district is what most downtowns utilize to fund these services. One example would be increased maintenance, increased security to augment the downtown deputies we have already, marketing and promotions, which would include not only special events such as the wedding on the Boulevard that we just completed, but also advertising, increased radio and traditional types of advertising, and also advocacy, which could include tenant attraction and retention, as well as, as well as staff to enact all of these programs that we've mentioned previously. Here are a few examples of other PBits that are currently operating within California. They're currently over 200, and PBits have a renewal rate of 99%, which means that the vast majority of people who are operating in PBits think that they're worthwhile and choose to continue them when they have the opportunity. Here are the PBit boundaries. We have Zone 1, which is Frontage on the Boulevard, and Zone 2, which is the rest of the area. You'll notice that there is one property that has been removed since the last time you saw this map. That's Sierra Medical Plaza. We had a number of the owners, which is, this is a kind of a unique property. It's condominium style. And we had a number of those property owners come to us and say that they felt that the benefits were not commensurate with the amount of money that they were being asked to fund. So we agreed with that, and we've removed them. So the documents you're being asked to approve tonight do not include Sierra Medical Plaza. This outlines the PBit formation process. So we've gone through all of this, and tonight, we're doing the public hearing and the final ballot. So we will, following the closure of my presentation, we will open the public hearing, hear from all the people who would like to comment in the audience tonight, close the public hearing, and then we will actually go, while you're continuing the meeting, and count all of the ballots. So do you have any questions for me at this time?
I guess not. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to leave the public hearing open. They're going to finish the voting. Oh, we're going to count the votes now, right?
You can, at your discretion-
Yeah, at your discretion, you can take the comments from the public now as part of the public hearing and allow people to have their say if they would like to speak. I think there are some cards. But we wanted to keep it open in the event some people arrived. Yes, there are, arrived late and still wanted to speak on this item.
I don't think we're going to have to worry about them arriving late with this many cards. Michael Reeves?
Mayor Paris, Council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. Once again, I get up to oppose this proposal to create this business district. I think that the Chamber of Commerce should be the one to promote the city. I don't think the property owners should be taxed any further because of the economy. And once again, I urge the Council to defeat this and let private enterprise promote the Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you. Dixie Iliopolis?
Yeah, Chris, Council? I really have more questions than I have comments because I am not in favor of it because a lot of those questions haven't been answered, still don't know the answers. And I'm not at all sure with the, the way the waiting is done, if this project could actually go forth without the individual property owners really being in favor of it. And the way it's been presented to me, and I was chair of the Downtown Revitalization Committee when we did a successful project in the 1980s, when the city had a project, they presented, they took it out of, off of the table because they couldn't justify the correctness of the assessments. And so it was withdrawn before we ever, they let us establish the downtown, the D-Rack, as we called it, and get people from all over the city involved in it. And in that instance, the property owner's assessment went first, and we knew exactly what we were paying for. It was all infrastructure. It was trees. It was lighting. It was widening of the streets. It was changing of the parking. It was providing for the adding of the, upgrading of the rear entrances to business, businesses, and actually, the alley loop system that kept the Boulevard open for traffic for the business and professional people and their clients that did not want to be distracted by a lot of things on the Boulevard. It also helped people that did want to shop in the downtown have good access to rear entrances so that they were not inconvenienced by having to drive down the Boulevard. Of course, the alley loop system has gone away now with the addition with this plan. And actually, I would not be able to sit down and calculate, and I did not go to my CPA to do it, actually, how this works out because it's by square footage and it's different for the building size and the parking lot and all of that. The way it's presented, it's almost like it's to prevent us from being able to see what this really means. And when the assessments in the 1980s were done, it was done by the front foot. And so you could calculate out the numbers of front feet on the Boulevard or in the areas. And we can't do that. And so that's only just one of my questions. And so I am a no vote. And I would like to see this delayed and backed up a little bit and give you a chance to really answer the questions that people don't have answers to. Thank you.
Thank you. George Gill?
Mayor, Council, and folks, this is my first time to stand here, second time in the building. And I'm a native and a fan of the Boulevard, and I also love this city. And I have a few things that I've noticed that I'd like to say pretty quickly, but I think other folks, some of it might be redundant now since I'm probably not up on what's happened lately. Overall, I feel that human beings have a tendency to make our situation worse in hard times because when we start to have less business, we seem to raise our prices. And I think that that's, the opposite would be better to lower the prices a little bit to try to stimulate business. Anyway, that's a feeling on that. I think as human beings, we all have a little bit of a greed factor evidently because things always seem to inflate, and then they go over the hill and then, and then go into more of a down thing for hopefully not a long time. And then, and then the good guys come in last, clean up the mess, and get it going again. And that's, throughout history, it seems like that's how things go. And I hope that doesn't happen to us. I really appreciate all that Lancaster has done, especially with downtown. Is, I came, I was gone 10 years, and then I came back here, thank God, and, and the city, and also got a pacemaker in the process, and doing way better thanks to that. I think it all saved my life at this point. To go on a little bit about raising taxes on the property owners and the businesses on the Boulevard, I too wish that that could be more postponed, I suppose, to see if the city could sacrifice some. Because I, I was wanting to come here before to ask the city if they would get more security on the weekends because I feel that a few of us that are into late night music, or playing late night music with bands, almost, in my case, almost, I felt that I almost got mugged one time. But I don't think it was the fault of the Boulevard or the city. It's just, there's a lot of folks here from other countries, and I don't, I don't think they respect our, our rules here and laws that we work so hard for. They even bring other languages here and stuff. And so it's kind of hard on an old native, but I'd better let you get back and thanks.
Thank you. Erica Albee?
Hello. I am a business owner on the Boulevard. I own the gym at the end of the block. I'm also the vice president of the Boulevard Association. This, for anybody that doesn't understand, this PBit is not actually a tax. It's something that's kind of being voted on by the building owners themselves. It's going to affect, affect only the businesses and the building property owners on this Boulevard. There's a table in the presentation that exactly lays out how it's calculated. It's done by square footage. As, as the vice president of the Boulevard Association, I think we've done a remarkable job with very little money. And the only way that we're going to expand and keep up with the wonderful Boulevard that you have put here for us and be able to protect it and do all the things we need to do is by increasing our budget. And the only way to increase that budget is with this presentation. So this is why most of us are in favor of it. I know that, you know, we've been talking about it for quite a while. I personally hope that it goes through. I don't mind paying more to know that there's security down here and that the cleaning's going to be done better and things like that. And that's not something that the city can provide for us. It's something that we, as an association, have to provide. And as far as I know, this is the only way that it's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Malish?
Mayor, City Council, thank you for this opportunity. I'm an investor on the Boulevard, purchased a property in 2010, and had a tenant. Through the construction, I lost a tenant because of the inability to have access. He couldn't afford to sustain the amount of time. So that lost revenue affected me $39,000. Upon the completion of the Boulevard, I received a new tenant I'm very happy with. We are, we are not in the hub of the Boulevard where, where most of the celebration and festivities are. We were told that there would be grant money available to offset some expenses, and we were told that the funds dried up. Then we said, we were told that there was funds available for facade work, and then we were told that they, they weren't available. We have a long-term tenant. We don't have anything provisions in our lease for any, for any additions to bear this expense. We've already went through a great expense. Again, we did buy as investors. We do love the Boulevard. That's why we bought here. The, the benefit to our particular property, other than, than the nice music and the, and the streets, we don't have the activity. We have government-owned properties across the street, so we don't get any foot traffic. You mentioned earlier that there was a medical condo building that was allowed to opt out because of the benefits. The way of Zone 1 and 2, and even add a 50% reduction for Zone 2 as far as the taxes that they have to pay, it's not fair that, that Zone 2 is, is much greater than Zone 1, and then they still have the same voting rights per, per, per building owner. When they, when they, when the actual liability is 50% less, I think that based on the support, would have to be more of Zone 2 than actually the Boulevard itself, which has to bear the expense. And, and our tenant that is there doesn't even see the benefit because even with farmer's market going in the opposite direction, they still don't benefit for any, from, from any foot traffic. So more than anything, we, we, you know, if we would have known that there was going to be excess fees, we may have had a chance to negotiate that with the tenant, and they're not even on board to do so. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Jill Cooper?
Good evening, Mayor Paris, Council.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you? I'm here to tell you that I am excited and I am hopeful that the PBit does pass. I feel that with the projected budget and the right people in place on the board, that we will continue the success and growth that the city has started with the redevelopment. We have something in place now that we are so proud of, and I feel that this will allow us to continue that momentum. The Boulevard merchants will have the opportunity to make the decisions in regard to the direction they want to go. Working in conjunction with the city, the Boulevard will be able to focus on providing additional services, security being a primary, because that's what everyone is so concerned with. So once the votes are counted, and if it does pass, I look forward to the Council agreeing with the majority and approving the PBit. Thanks.
Thank you. Merle McLernan?
Good evening, Council, ladies and gentlemen. I own the building at 759 West Lancaster Boulevard, and I have my architect's office in there. I'm also a co-owner of Kinetic Brewing Company. And I'm definitely in favor of this property business improvement district because it's an assessment tax, whatever you want to call it, we're taking money out of our own pockets. But it's not leaving. It stays here. And it stays within the boundaries you saw up on the wall, and that's it. And then we, as property owners and business owners, decide where it goes. Ultimately, all taxes should work that way. Unfortunately, it doesn't work out. But we've projected how we want this money to be used, say-
Thank you. Whit Smith?
Paris, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Whit Smith. I address at 44847 North 10th Street West. And I will make it short so I can loan my time, but not to the gentleman, to the first guy to talk. Anyway, if I could give this to the city clerk, they could distribute. You don't have enough reading matter as it is, so you could read by request to exempt my property from this project, which is nice for downtown, but it's not needed for my property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Maria Pizzano?
Some of the concerns I have is that in our town, there's a lot of places that don't, that are, the businesses have all went out of business. It's not as nice as the area here on the boulevard. It seems to be only concentrated in this area where, you know, all the money is being put. I mean, I know there's a lot more being put in a lot of other places too, but, and also with the taxes. I recently have been sent letters about my taxes because of wanting to do one project that was at the city park and also one that was on the boulevard. Now they're sending me a thing for taxes for the past three years, saying I owe all this back money and stuff because of doing something at the city park for one time, as well as on the boulevard. So I'm having, like I said, I think that this is what's happening with a lot of people. We're being taxed a lot for a lot of the things that are going on here on the boulevard projects and things. Also, with the property that's been taken in this area, is anybody getting any benefit or any money back from that with all the property that's been taken to make, to build all this and make this? It's another question that I have. And I think, like she was saying, the lady that was up here earlier, there's a lot of questions about a lot of things that are going on, as far as who's paying for what. And those are my concerns. I have a lot more, believe me, but that's just something that I heard that was going on tonight, and it just kind of all hit me right now.
I take it you're against it?
Well, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to leave the public hearing open while they count the votes.
Can I say one more thing?
Of course.
I think that's another reason why records have to be destroyed as well. So we can look more into this and what's happening.
I'm sorry, why don't you come up? I can't hear you. I'm old and deaf.
There's another issue with all the records that are being destroyed and stuff too, and I think that that's something else, why I was opposed to all of that as well.
What records are being destroyed?
It was in the agenda also. It was a few months ago as well. But I think that's necessary.
Okay, yeah. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Plannett.
Along with some of the other things I want to bring up tonight too, as to why I don't think that should happen.
Go ahead and deal with that issue. What records are being destroyed? And why? Go ahead and talk to me about that, and then I'll move on. You can do that. See, see if you have time.
Can we address Dr. Smith, whether the pull-up property, do you know which property is? Please. Get out here.
Okay. Allison, you spent 20 minutes explaining this to me, and I obviously didn't get it.
We're going to close the public hearing to allow a tally of the votes.
Okay. So the public hearing is closed?
If you so decree, yes.
Wow, I get to make decrees. It's great being mayor. Okay. So decreed. Am I waiting for that, or can I move forward?
Now we're going to allow staff to tally the votes, and they will come back and report, and then we will ask the council to vote once we have the report back of what the votes are of the property owners.
So can we take a break now and wait for that?
No. I have a question first.
Yes.
Before they count the votes, can we put that map back up and on the presentation and look at one of the people that have asked to be exempt? Can we take a look at that?
Sure, you can look at the map.
You shouldn't move. If they pull, Sierra Medical.
The property that had been removed is Sierra Medical Plaza, which is right here. This was a unique opportunity because this is not a contiguous property. So the law does not allow for us to pick and choose individuals in the center of the district. We couldn't do it piecemeal, but because they are on the very edge, it was possible to remove them legally.
Where's Dr. Smith?
He is, I'm not sure of the parcel on this map, but he's somewhere in the center of this section here.
The opposite side, about same distance.
The only people we get exempt are on the edges.
That's correct.
For once, you should have been on the fringe, Dr. Smith. Okay, thank you. Go ahead and count. Let's take a break. Ed! We're having a meeting here, Ed. Okay, we're, call it back to order. Apparently, more people voted on the Boulevard Association issue than voted in the Lancaster City Council election. So it's going to take a while. So let's go forward. And we missed a speaker, right? You want to take care of that?
This young man, Mr. Jaylian Ash, has spent some time practicing coming before you. This is his first time coming in a setting like this. And because our march is a youth-led march, we are teaching them leadership, and we are showing them leadership. So I'd like him to present his speech and what he wanted to address to you, Mayor, and your city council members.
Great, let's hear it.
My name is Jaylian Ash. I am African-American of African-American and Panamanian descent.
I told him he couldn't read his speech. And that really wasn't fair, because he wasn't ready for that. So I'm going to let you read. This is the last speech you get to read, okay?
My name is Jaylian Ash. I am of, I am 13 years old. I, I am of African-American and Panamanian descent. By being in the mentor program has helped me deal with issues such as my anger and dealing with my anger and relationships with my family, friends, most importantly, authority figures. Before I was in the mentor program, I was getting in trouble all the time. I also felt that no one cared about me. Although my parents wasn't around, when my grandpa died, I had no male figure to talk to. My grandpa, my grandpa, my grandpa was here for me, my sisters too, but she was, no, my grandma too, but she was too busy. I couldn't tell her about me being bullied and had to fight so I could prove I wasn't scared. When the mentor program, when the mentor program came to Co. Middle School, my school, uh, Miss, uh, I forget what I was going to say. Taught me, taught me, taught Mrs., no, taught me, no, I had Miss Gwen. I learned how to deal with my anger, and now that I am, I am in control of myself, and I know, I now want to be a better person. Thank you.
Good job. Thank you. Okay, now we have Cal Water, and let's see if they do a better job than him. The bar has been set. We're going to vote on you when you're done.
Well, I have my speech too, so I might read part of it.
Oh, come on, he's 13. He gets to read it.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, and thank you for having me here tonight. My name's Darren Duncan. I'm the manager of rates at California Water Service Company. As you know, Cal Water filed a general rate case in July of 2012, and this is in front of the Public Utilities Commission of the State of California. We appreciate the interest that the council and our customers have shown and have taken up in this GRC process. And I really wanted to keep this pretty short tonight. I wanted to talk just a little bit about the GRC or the General Rate Case Overview process. What our settlement with the Public Utilities Commission, Division of Ratepayer Advocates is up to this date, what we're at. I wanted to talk a little bit about our sales and our customer assistance programs. So as I mentioned, Cal Water is regulated by the California Public Utilities Commission, and every three years, we are required to come before the commission and present our rate case. And in this process, the Public Utilities Commission audits all of our books, and they look at all of the costs of providing service to our customers to make sure that we can provide safe, reliable water service. So in the settlement process, we continue to meet with Division of Ratepayer Advocates to make sure we have the right infrastructure in place for the next three years. We've met with the city on a couple occasions, and we've been meeting with your attorney. And we've also been meeting with the Leona Valley Town Council. They're interveners in this rate case. The city is an intervener, so the city is a party to this rate case. And we appreciate the input. We hear you. We've heard clearly that this is a big rate case and that we need to do what we can to keep the rates under control. We've heard the customers. We've met with individual customers, and we've met with the Division of Ratepayer Advocates. We've heard you. So in order to minimize our rate increase and the impacts of the GRC on the water rates, we've re-reviewed our infrastructure plans, and we've pushed back the start date of projects that were not critical to do now. So we looked at these projects, and if we can push them out of the rate case, we've done it. And the changes that we've made so far have resulted in about an 80% reduction in the costs that we can control. And this is compared to what was originally proposed in 2012, and this is, these are the projects that allow us to operate the water systems safely, efficiently, and despite recent changes in water consumption. Now, where are we? We still are in the negotiation process with Division of Ratepayer Advocates and with the city and with the other interveners in the case. We have our controllable costs, including our expenses to operate the system and the capital projects, the infrastructure projects, down to about a 6% increase. So that's, but that's not the whole story. There's still the rates that are associated with the reduction in sales. So our sales have dropped, have declined since 2008 by 25%. And so when our, when our sales decline, we have to adjust our units to make sure that we are recovering our costs. And I like to say that this increase is attributable to sales that have dropped, and they dropped by 25%, like I said. And it's really a Public Utilities Commission issue, not a Cal Water issue. Because in 2008, the Public Utilities Commission required Cal Water and all major water companies to decouple their rates from their, their revenue from their sales. So our costs are projected and included in the rate case, and this is to promote water conservation. So it's not a disincentive for Cal Water to promote conservation. So if we get this right, with the 6% increase in our controllable costs and then the increase in the sales, what will happen is those RAM charges that appear on people's bills that we've heard a lot about, people don't like the RAM charges, will go away, but they'll be phased out over time. So essentially, what we're looking at is a pretty low increase, but there is the rate So I want to talk a little bit about customer assistance, and we understand there's never a good time for a rate increase. And to that end, we have an obligation of providing service to all of our customers and making sure that there's safe water to drink and safe water for the, enough water to provide fire protection. So in addition to delaying some of those infrastructure projects that we felt we could hold off on, we also offer customers a host of water conservation issues, items to allow them to reduce their individual bills. And we've also proposed an increase in the LIRA component, which is our Low Income Ratepayer Assistance Program. So we're currently in negotiations with the Division of Ratepayer Advocates on all of these items, including, like I said, the interveners and including the city of Lancaster. I look forward to continuing to work together to resolve these issues and continuing to be a partner with the city and try to get it right. And that's the end of my prepared remarks. I would be happy to answer questions. I know there's a lot of people that want to speak. Thank you.
Where did you come up with the acronym RAM?
That is actually a Public Utilities Commission. It stands for Water Revenue Adjustment Mechanism. It's water because we're water, but all the power companies, Edison and PG&E, have RAMs also, and they're E-RAMs. And so it's a way to promote conservation and decoupling sales from consumption.
Was your revenue, my understanding is your revenue was up 11%? Your profits are up 29%?
Yeah, I'm not ready to talk about profits tonight. I came to talk about the rate increase.
Hey, hey, what he's doing is difficult. You know, give him a break. Let's hear what he has to say. Everybody gets their turn. But I've been in that seat, and it is painful when people laugh, all right? Go ahead. You requested a 59% rate increase, okay? The ratepayers tax, the advocates said they'd give you half of that, correct?
You know, I don't know what they said.
Well, that's what they said.
If that's what they said in the report, then, yeah.
Right. So what you're asking now is 28% because these people conserved the water, because they can't afford to pay for the water. Can we put that chart back up? Can we leave it up? Can we buy an apple? Can you explain that to me? Why, that's what I don't understand. I don't understand why you're three times higher than everyone else. I know that you say that if you were in private business, you would be out of business today. The only reason that you're in business is because you go hide under the umbrella of the PUC.
Uh, yeah, I'm not ready to talk about profits tonight. I came to talk about the, the rate increase, the rate case.
Hey, hey, what, what he's doing is difficult. You know, give him a break. Let's hear what he has to say. Everybody gets their turn, but I've been in that seat and it is painful when people laugh, alright? Go ahead. You requested a 59% rate increase, okay? The ratepayers tax, the advocates said they'd give you half of that, correct?
Uh, you know, I don't know what they said, I, I-
Well, that's what they said.
If that's what they said in the report, then-
Right.
Yeah.
So what you're asking now is 28% because these people conserved the water because they can't afford to pay for the water. Can we put that chart back up? Can we leave it up? Can we buy an apple? Can you explain that to me? Why, I, that's what I don't understand. I don't understand why you're three times higher than everyone else. I, I, I know that you say that if you were in private business, you would be out of business today. The only reason that you're in business is because you go hide under the umbrella of the PUC.
Well, what I think I'd like to say about this is that we have 24 districts throughout the state and the way that the Public Utilities Commission sets rates is that each one of those districts has to stand alone and it has to be, the cost of service is set for that district. And so Lancaster is part of our Antelope Valley District and it is a more expensive district for us to operate, mostly because of the small scale.
Would you be willing to get rid of it?
No, we are not in a position to get rid of our, our districts. We, we think we provide a, a community service. We buy these systems, we fix them up and we are, are not planning to get rid of them.
Allison, can we, let me ask you a question. Can we participate in a class action suit against Cal Water?
I would have to look into whether we have standing, but that is absolutely something we can explore.
Yeah, I'm confused how in the heck, Palm Ranch is not a big water company and Quartzville's not a big water company and neither is Palmdale and, and I'm, I'm confused how they're capable of cash flowing and making money at a third of that. It just doesn't, it just doesn't right, it's just not-
What do you rank in the state as far as water?
We have, like I said, we have 24 districts and they range from a very low, our Visalia-Bakersfield District is very low. Average bill is $35 a month based on-
We want to trade.
Service, the cost of service in that district to our very high cost of service districts. And, and I guess the other thing I did want to mention is that there is a proceeding at the Public Utilities Commission now for companies such as Cal Water to have uniform rates or to, to take those 24 districts and put them together because PG&E doesn't have and Edison doesn't have individual cost of service ratemaking by district. They have one tariff across the service territory and we're kind of still unsure why water is different than power, other than the cost of service in the local agencies.
I, I understand that you don't want to talk about your profits, but when your profits are at 29% and you're trying to balance your book and profit on the backs of our citizens, it's just wrong.
So our profits are set on the amount of investment we make in our systems and that is regulated by the Public Utilities Commission, our return on our investment-
Explain to me, because I'm, I'm also confused on how you actually make an investment if you pass along to your ratepayers. How are these your investments? They're, they're investments?
Well, for example, in Lancaster, if we build a tank or a well, Cal Water will actually finance that from our shareholders or by a, a equity offering. We will build that and we are authorized a return on that investment and that is part of the rate that goes into the, to the customer. So our customers' rates, their bill, is based on the expenses needed to operate the system and Cal Water doesn't make any money on those expenses and added to that is our return on our, our capital investment on the infrastructure.
And you're making money, uh, let's talk about the RAM charges a little bit. So if they conserve water, you charge them more, correct?
Okay, so on the RAM, our, our revenue is adopted for the year and so if our sales are lower, the commission allows us to put in a surcharge to make up that revenue so that we're even. At the same time, if people use more water and, and we have overcollected, we have to give that back. So the RAM is intended to be a neutral mechanism to encourage conservation.
You, you would not be in business if you were a private entity. You would not be in business.
We are a private entity.
What is, what is the profit margin of your other districts? If you're 29% here, what's your lowest?
The 29%, I'm not sure where that came from. I don't know. I have Justin with me. Uh, what the, and do you have any idea where the 29% comes from?
I'm assuming that that came from our-
Come on up, come on up.
Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor, thank you for having us here tonight. I'm assuming that came from our second quarter release, I'm not sure.
It did.
Okay. That's for the entire company, California Water Service Group, not just Lancaster. California Water Service Group not only includes the subsidiary in California, but also subsidiaries in New Mexico, the State of Washington and the State of Hawaii, all hold about 500,000 customers, I'm sorry, 500,000 service connections, 2 million customers across those four different subsidiaries, including all of the unregulated activities that, that we have, operation agreements, leases on water systems, et cetera. So it's somewhat of a misnomer to say your profit was 29% and assume that it came from everybody here in Lancaster. Now, the flip side of that is that-
Look at the chart.
The, there's a couple, there's a couple, there's a couple critical differences. Darren already, already acknowledged one of them, that there are critical differences in size between LA County District 40, they have 55,000 customers and Lancaster, we have 700 and our Antelope Valley District, we have 1,300. Simple economies of scale tell you that the cost to do anything in LA District 40 is going to be lower than the cost to do it here. There's more customers there to show-
These people cannot afford to eat because you're charging so much for water. They, they're, they're, they're scheduling, they're bathing activities, their lawns are going brown and you're making 29% on our citizens.
The, again, the 29% is not on the residents here in Lancaster.
I, I don't care if it's, you're, you're making money from our citizens.
Let, let me, let me choose to say two things. One, in regards to customers that have difficulty paying their bill, Darren already mentioned both of these things, I think it bears repeating though, excuse me. We have both our conservation programs for our customers that allow them to do things, like get monthly audits of their water usage, that allows that free of charge, that allows bathroom retrofits, high efficiency toilets, high efficiency urinals for businesses, high efficiency sprinkler nozzles, et cetera, that'll help allow those customers to control their water usage. More importantly than that are those customers that are in a, in a low income situation. As Darren already said, we do have a low income rate assistance program for those customers. The way that program currently works is it's the same as the energy companies, they also have low income rate assistance programs. If you qualify based on certain income guidelines that are the same income guidelines for other federal and state assistance programs, you're allowed to participate in that program. Currently what that program stands at is 50% of your monthly service charge, but it's capped at 12%. What we've done with DRA and this, these proceedings during this general rate case is say, let's remove that cap because there are places like Lancaster where we have a very high service charge and admittedly high bills in comparison to those other districts. And it hurts those customers if all they get back or all they don't have to pay on their water bills, that $12. Does that get us all the way home? Does that fix all the problems? Absolutely not and we recognize that, which is certainly why Darren said that we look forward to continuing working with the city. We continue to look forward, we can, we look forward to continue to work with Division of Ratepayer Advocates and to minimize the increases that are necessary here as much as possible.
Mr. Mayor, question please. So you're saying that there's programs so that the customers can conserve water?
Yes.
Whether it's low flowing toilets or shower nozzles or drip systems. But then you just got done saying that if you have decreased sales, that the rates are gonna go up.
I think that-
So, so-
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Please, please, I don't, I don't need people to come while I'm asking. Thank you. So, so how does that work? I mean, if you're going and helping the, the people try to conserve water, but then you're having less sales, then you're gonna be charging them more in fees. So, yeah.
So if I can answer that one.
Right.
The RAM fees are on a district-wide basis, so we, we have that total revenue for the district. The water conservation programs will help people manage their individual bills.
How does that matter? You know, we just talked about water conservation. If I go, because I know, the Public Works guy knows, I'm, I'm a big water conservation person, so my bills are real low. If I had your company, I'd be paying probably a thousand dollars, 1,200 dollars a month because I conserve so much water, because I don't use hardly anything. So how does that help the person with their bill if you're coming to them and saying, well, use less water? If I use less water, I get hit with a surcharge.
So, so the surcharges are set on a volumetric basis and they're temporary. They're anywhere from 12 to 36 months and it allows us to, to recover a known quantity. And so if you reduce your, your bill, if you, if you were saying you're using 20 units a month and you cut it down to 10, you're gonna have lower per unit cost and the RAM charges are only on those 10 units. So it's, it's an attempt to recover revenue-
No, I understand, I understand. You're, you have a particular margin that you want to hit and you're gonna get it one way or the other. Either they're gonna use a lot of water and you're gonna charge them a lot, or they're gonna use less water and you're gonna charge them some more. It's one way or the other, you want to get that final profit margin. So let me ask you, what's your, what's the average bill in that district?
In which it is-
What's the average bill in that district?
In Lan, in the AV, Antelope Valley District?
Yeah, or the, yeah, or the, the one that we're talking about now. You said there was a 701 and 1,300 in the other, so what's the average bills?
It's, it's, hold on one second. I want to make sure we give you an accurate number.
And then give me what's the high bills?
I don't, I don't see it in front of me right now.
Okay, this is for average usage.
Okay, okay. So average bill right now is a hundred dollars a month, 101 dollars and 3 cents. But-
No, can I just say, just hang on, hang on here.
My other point is there's no-
So you're saying out of your, out of your, when you send out the bills every month, 700 bills, you're telling me that that average is $100?
Yes. But that's the average and I, there's no customers that are the average.
So that means there's some, because I know there's people in the audience here that are paying 500 to 1,200 dollars a month, so that means you have, must have some clients that are only paying 10 bucks. I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't make-
We have a-
I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to see the spreadsheet on that because I don't believe it. I don't believe it.
We can get that-
There's no way that-
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let them, let them talk.
I'll let them talk, but I don't believe it. I don't, I don't believe that the average bill is 100 bucks.
Are you aggregating, are you aggregating all of your customers when you come up to that or is it just Palmdale? I mean, just, excuse me.
That's just-
I have Palmdale on my mind these days.
That's just Lancaster and that's for an average use, that's single family households. If there's a multi-family household, that number is different, but that's not included in that number. If there's a corporate account, a business account with Cal Water, that's also not included in that amount. And I will say this, an individual who's earning 500 to 600 dollars of, that has a bill of 500 or 600 dollars, there isn't an astronomical amount of water in the city.
You, you wanna bet? I, I have a bill here from an individual, 544 dollars. It's the same amount of water that I use at my house, which is 68 dollars.
And, and how many?
We've been meaning to talk to you about the number of showers.
Right. The, it's-
Astronomical amount.
Well, Mr. Vice Mayor, Ms. Mayor, the average usage of water in, in the Lancaster service area is 29 CCF, 100 cubic feet per month. That is by far the largest in any Cal Water district. The average across California for all of our service areas is closer to 15. Customers here, a customer that has a 500 dollar bill in the Lancaster service area, they're using a, a fair amount of water every month. And I would surmise that there's opportunities there for that customer to conserve water, to take advantage of some of the programs that we have.
Tell me about the pipe size thing you were telling me about.
You charge a fee for a 1-inch main.
I'm sorry?
I think it's 70, a, for your 1-inch service charge, it's 72 dollars, okay? And for a 3/4 inch service or 5/8ths, it's like 14 dollars?
The monthly service charge on a 3/4 inch meter is 41.36.
Nine dollars or eight dollars more than LA County or-
Again, I'm not, I'm not going to dispute that our rates are higher than other, other areas.
Okay, let me, let me ask you a couple things.
Sure.
I want, I want you to reverse roles with us for a minute, alright? And it's our job to represent these folks.
Absolutely.
And we see a chart like that and any way you look at it, it's not fair. What do we do to fix it?
I think that-
And you're me now.
And I, and I understand.
And we have to, and we have to fix it.
Right, absolutely. Cal Water understands that perfectly and, and Darren said that at the beginning, I'll reiterate that, that we're extremely happy that the, that the residents here have become active in the rate case, that the council has become active in the rate case, that the, that the city itself is an intervener in the rate case. And up to this point, that has caused us to relook at all the expenses that we have in the district. What capital programs are we proposing here? What are our costs in the district? Do, you know, what is the makeup of the, the employees in the district? And frankly, in the Antelope Valley District, we, we have two and a half employees, so it's not as though we've got 15 employees that are serving those, those 1,200 customers. And I absolutely understand, we absolutely understand where the city has come from. You see that chart and even if we, we show you a chart in terms of what the numbers are, regardless of what those numbers are, I'm not going to dispute that a water bill for an equal amount of usage in Cal Water's Lancaster service area is higher than it is in LA County District 40 and I'll use that as the example because those are the two extremes on the chart that you have up there. The reason for that, the overwhelming reason for that is the number of customers that are, that exist in the system. Again, LA District 40 has 50,000 customers or 55,000 customers, we've got 700 customers. How do you fix it?
That's the, that's the question.
It, it's a difficult situation. I think that it starts with examining our costs, looking at, at the, what type of capital programs or infrastructure improvements.
But even if you do that with that, with that customer base, you're not gonna get there.
I think that, well, my question back to you is get to where? What do you, what do you envision as being affixed to the, the problem?
Well, let's, let's examine where the problem's gonna be in five years. We, we know, I mean, the reason you're in this business is it's the new oil. I mean, water is becoming, becoming more and more precious, right? It's gonna get more and more valuable. There, there's a reason oil people are going into the water business, you know, I mean, they're not stupid. So we're, we're going to see these rates go up and up and up. I mean, and, and there's nothing we're gonna do to stop that, but this seems to be the tip of the iceberg. And, and look what, and let me finish. Look what you're seeing.
No, I, please finish.
If you don't solve it here now, you're not going to exist because at the end of the day, the voters in this state are going to set the rules.
Sure.
And I, I just don't see the benefit to, to, to trying to force this down their throat because all you're gonna do is mobilize the rest of the community. And if there's a time to compromise, it's now.
Sure.
That may be selling, it may be merging with other districts, it may be doing a lot of things to get the, the impact of a larger customer base.
Absolutely.
But I don't see that in front of us because what I see in front of us is something you and I both know is not going to work.
We are, in, in terms of compromise and working with not only the city, but also the Leona Valley Town Council, Leona Valley obviously part of our Antelope Valley District as well, the residents here in Lancaster are absolutely willing to work with the council, the city, the city's attorney who's representing the city in the rate case, all those interveners to come to a resolution to this issue. And there are, as Darren indicated, there are proceedings right now going on before the Public Utilities Commission, separate from our general rate case, that are examining options for these high-cost districts such as Lancaster, where we do have a small customer base that would look at some type of statewide rate. I don't want to sit here and say that's the solution or that's going to happen. I don't think Darren nor I can say that we know for sure that that's going to happen. In terms of merging with other districts, making the customer base larger, absolutely that's a solution to, that's a solution to the high bills here. The question is how do we get there? My commitment and Cal Water's commitment to the city here tonight is to work with the city to examine what those solutions are.
Any suggestions?
We could sue them.
I'm sorry?
We could sue you.
Hey, you know, folks, 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 I do that for a living. You, you have no idea what you're walking into. You're, you're looking at a five-year resolution. How many people are gonna be able to pay 500 dollar bills for five years? I mean, this really is a solution that has to be found soon. But we're obviously unhappy with the solutions you're proposing because at the end of the day, we are not going to allow these people to have to pay 500 dollar water bills. It's not sustainable. It is simply not sustainable. And at, at the end of the day, I want these people to thrive. And what do we do to fix that? When can you fix it? Who are you meeting with? What other water districts, you know?
In terms of-
Because what I keep, keep hearing from you is, and I understand your position.
Sure.
I mean, you got into this to, to make money. The, that you don't want to sell. You don't want to divest. But I, I need to convince you that you're staring at a brick wall, that I don't think you have the ability to break through. Because at the end of the day, we have the votes and that will decide how this thing comes down at the end of the day. Rather than go through that fight- Rather than go through that fight, why aren't you working with Allison to come to a resolution that you can live with?
In, I'm sorry-
Because you cannot live with the alternative.
In regards to this general rate case specifically, or-
Yeah, I, I don't care about the rest of the world. All I care about is Lancaster.
I'm, I'm asking the question, in regards to this general rate case specifically, or in regards to the larger issue. If it's in regards to this general rate case, though Allison is not representing the city on that matter, the city's attorney who is representing-
Doug Everts is representing the city in this matter.
And we are working closely with him. We were just on a call with him the other day, and, and the rest of the interveners, working specifically on this issue to, in the short term, minimize whatever increase is necessary in Lancaster. The medium to long-term issues that need to be examined, that we will work with the city on, that we're more than happy to meet with the mayor, the vice mayor, any of the members of the council, any members of the staff, to figure out what is the best way to, what is in the best interest of the residents here? How can we come to a resolution to this matter, so that everyone in the city is thriving? We don't want anything different than that.
So, why aren't we doing a moratorium until that's reached? Because right now, what you're proposing is, all it does is mobilize everybody.
Well, well, two things. One, we are required by the Public Utilities Commission to file a review of our rates every three years. So it's, it's not optional on our part whether or not we file the general rate case.
It is optional for you to request a rate increase.
What I will say is that there are certainly infrastructure improvements that are needed in, in this district, in the, specifically in the Lancaster service area that we proposed. We've looked to minimize those as much as possible to only those that are of absolute necessity. And the other-
No, I understand that, but you're still presenting these people with bills they cannot pay. I, I mean, at the end of the day, that's what it's coming down to, they cannot pay it.
If there is a customer that cannot pay their bill, the first thing that they need, the first thing they need to do is they need to call us. There is not a customer in the Lan- in our Lancaster service area that we want to shut off. We will work with that customer specifically to determine if there's any opportunities that they have for saving, in terms of their monthly bill, either in terms of conservation programs, or being signed up for our LIRA program. And I understand wholeheartedly that this doesn't, that these short-term solutions do not get us to the end result that I believe that everybody on the council, and frankly, everybody in this room, including Cal Water wants. It brings us no joy, meaning, being here tonight.
I know that.
And, and being in, in this situation. And, I hope that, that, that you can take my word for it, and the word of the company for it, that we want a resolution to this issue, and we are willing to listen to any ideas. I don't want to say X, Y, and Z are the absolute solutions, because there's, not only would those solutions need to be reviewed and approved by the Public Utilities Commission, I don't think that they solve the short-term issue, which is that you've got somebody who has a 500 dollar water bill. What does that person need to do? Call us. That person needs to call us, we will work with that person. If they're having difficulty paying their bill, we'll make sure that we work with them to pay what they can. We don't want to be shutting people off, that's not the business that we're in. It's not part of our company mission to do those things, and it's not what we want to do. That customer needs to call us, we will, we will work with those customers. And unfortunately, whether or not the, the folks in the room, and the council, and the city staff wants to hear it or not, in the short term, the next week, the next two weeks, the next few months, that's the best solution for those folks. And during that time, I think that additional conversations between Cal Water and the city, Cal Water and the other interveners in this rate case, internal conversations with Cal Water, to examine what possibilities exist to increase the customer base here, is what will get us to that medium to long-term, that solution that will only occur over the medium to long-term.
The, the problem with that is you're, you're going to see this snowball build. I mean, you really are. I mean, I, I do this for a living. Things get bigger, they get more expensive, they, they get, people get more intransigent. If, if, if you don't do something to immediately reduce these rates for a period of time for a resolution to occur, I don't think you're going to get an opportunity to resolve. I think that they're going, they're going to force our hand. And I don't, and you know, the, the alternatives that are being presented to us, I don't like the long-range effects of. I would, I would prefer to see some type of agreement reached, that everybody is happy with, or equally unhappy with. Right? This is, you've taken the, the bull by the horns on this.
I think you're being disingenuous.
I'm sorry you feel that way, nothing could be further from the truth.
You asked for a 59% rate increase. You have all these capital improvements. You have said that you will take back those capital improvements, you just want 2% per year, which is a 6% increase, okay? The ratepayers advocates are saying, with those capital improvements, you're only going to get 30%. You want us to agree on a 36% rate increase. You, you're trying to blow sunshine up my keister, and I'm not going for it.
I, I, again, I'm sorry that you feel that way, nothing-
Well, but tell me where I'm wrong.
I, in terms of, I, you, you said that I'm attempting to blow smoke up your behind? Nothing could be further from the truth.
Okay.
The numbers are what the numbers are, that is true.
You, you asked originally for 59%, okay? I, I get all the paperwork from the attorney, okay? And he's saying now you want a 6%, but no capital improvements. Okay? So you want 28% because they're conserving water.
Around 80% of our costs are fixed, regardless of how much water we sell. Our district manager has to be here, we have to be able to fix leads, we have to meet water quality standards, regardless of how much water we sell.
Okay, so if the ratepayers advocates are saying, with all this, we're going to recommend 30%, you're saying, well, let's cut out all the improvements and ask for 36%?
Well, first, first and foremost, we haven't cut out all the capital improvements. We've minimized the, in this rate case, we have relooked at those capital improvements that are absolutely necessary at this point in time. What are the projects that we can defer until a later point in time, and defer those projects? In terms of the negotiations that are ongoing with Division of Ratepayer Advocates, I'm not sure if you're referring to DRA's original report, but since DRA released its original report back in May?
March.
In March, negotiations and settlement discussions have been ongoing with not only, with Cal Water, the Division of Ratepayer Advocates, the City of Lancaster, the Leona Valley Town Council, et cetera, to come to a mutual agreement on what the change in rates will be as a result of this general rate case process.
I'm done with them. Can we hear from the county?
You're going to fix this for us, right, Norm?
No pressure, right?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
On behalf of Supervisor Antonovich, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council for being here. A while back, the folks from Lancaster and folks from Leona Valley asked us to pull a meeting together, to look at different options that were available, and see what the feasibility might be. Whether that be District 40 actually taking on the service area for Lancaster and Leona Valley and other parts further west. We brought Lafco together, we brought District 40 together, and we're working with our management. Right now, we're looking at, and talking to council. There is no easy solution that we can find, just yet. But we will find a solution. We've made that commitment to the community out there, both in Lancaster and, because they're all constituents of the supervisor, as they are constituents of yours, and so we're going to find an answer. Lafco is looking at different things from a legal standpoint, from a ability to expand the district to District 40. District 40 is looking at the infrastructure, what kind of bond financing might have to be required. There's a lot of issues. Michael Moore, who is the county council, he is working with Doug Everts and talking to him quite extensively in the last couple of days, so we're going to find an answer. So, you ready?
If we took all of the water service in Lancaster, worked with the county, made it one district, on these smaller districts where their, their rates are just too high, what would it take to start providing water to those folks?
I'm not a water expert, Mr. Mayor, and so that's why I'd leave that to the director of Water Works District 40 to probably answer those questions at some point in the near future. But I mean, Water Works District 40 serves throughout Lancaster, all the way out to Lake Los Angeles, through parts of western Palmdale.
And I think that's the part, that seems to be the problem.
So they have a lot of technical complications, they have a lot of problems you have to overcome, they have a lot of structure, infrastructure they have to build, and they do it, and you see the rates that they, they provide there. So yes, they have more connections, yes, they have more people that are actually using the service, but they have a lot more infrastructure that they, that they have to provide for, and have a secondary source coming from AVAC. So, they have a lot of challenges too. So we can overcome those, they've done a great job, credit to them, and I think we can find an answer at some point. What it is, I don't know, and I can't stand to-
Well, it just occurs to me, if they're unwilling to sell it to Water District 40, let's just build our own infrastructure.
We might have to do that. Hence the reason why we brought Lafco in, and to meet with the folks in, the folks from Leona Valley and from Lancaster.
Would you tell the supervisor, at the end of the day, Lancaster would like to control its own water?
Well, we've done that, and I think you and I have been in the same meeting when we did that, so, yes, sir.
Thank you.
It's an easy one to do.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome.
You know, you guys, I've been around here a long time, I was born on Lancaster Boulevard. You really don't want to piss off Mike Antonovich. You just don't, okay? Look at the wise. If, if, if he embraces this, this is a problem, he will solve it.
Well, this is, many times I've been in here, but my first time speaking. So to Mayor Perez, Vice Mayor Chris, Councilman Mann, Councilman Smith, and Deputy Mayor Harvey, how are you? I want to give you a visualization, if I may. I'm on an acre of property, my house is 4,000 square feet, I have four toilets, I only use two of them. I drink bottled water. I have gone from the grass area to about 800 square feet of grass. I have a small pool, about 15,000 gallons, which is a small pool. My water bill was 550 dollars for the month. Now, I spent 9,000 dollars in doing what you indicated. I put in gravel out front, and I spent actually 8,900 and change. My water bill last month was 378 dollars. So, my concern is, and there's other, my neighbors up here, not up here, had spent 6,000 dollars on doing their front yard, and their water bill's down in the 300s. Two neighbors across the street are in foreclosure. Now, I'm a real estate broker by trade, I've been here for 36 years doing this. How in the world do I sell a house when I have to say, here's your principal and your interest, your taxes and your insurance, oh, by what's the utility cost? Well, you might have a little bit of a high problem here. We've got a 500 dollar water bill, we've got to pay on a monthly basis in the summer. That's a tough sale, guys. And so, when I've got two houses across the street, one I know is behind 4,000 dollars in their water bill, they haven't paid it yet, and they're moving out, and it's looking pretty bad. The other one across the street, their water bill was 1,000 dollars. This is tough. I mean, this is really unreasonable. Now, I built the house 25 years ago, so I'm not new to the area, but what I am new to is seeing these bills. And I think it's unreasonable, I think there's something that does need to be worked out. And so when you say to me that we'll work with you, let me tell you what, what that means. I'll call them up, I'll say, hey, listen, you got to read my meters. Somebody will come out and they'll say, it's right, your meter's right. And so there's nothing more they can add. Then what we're looking for is something reasonable where we can see a reduction in the rate. Your rate's too high, let's get it worked out. Thank you.
You got to quit taking so many showers.
Dude, I smelt it. Anyway, so Mayor Perez, everybody else, thank you for letting me be here. One of the first things I'd like to say is with Darren and the other guys from Cal Water, they're, these are really nice guys, so don't take anything personal from them, they're out here as the guys in the front line, you know, with everybody taking shots at. What really needs to happen in this type of a thing, when you see these kind of rates, is the CEO, Peter Nelson, I believe his name is, he's the one that should be here, listening to what people say, because he's the guy. Otherwise, he's just going to, you know, pay their salaries to come out and get shot at, and it's not cool, because they are good guys. I'm one with the 600 dollar a month water bill last month, and of that 600 dollars a month, I live on an acre, but only half of my acre is landscape, I've got 11,000 square feet of, of concrete, so I don't have a whole lot of stuff, although it's, you know, I've tried to keep it green. But I pay 600 dollars a month. Last month of that 600 dollars, 100, I think it was 110 dollars was the RAM charge. So I have paid thousands of dollars for the low-flow sprinkler heads in the toilets and all those kind of things, that they say, you know, do these things, doesn't work with it, but I've already put those things in, and it's still 600 dollars a month. One of the things that Darren had said, and I, obviously, everybody gets it, so I'm beating a dead horse, but I feel like the more times they hear it, the more maybe they'll get it. With a straight face, Darren came up and said, you know, it's really the amount of hookups that they've got. They've got 588 hookups. Well, I'm a businessman, I, I own a small business. If I don't have enough customers to be able to sell my product to, I can't just triple the price so that I can stay in business. So what I would have to do is, either, well, I'd have to get out of business. So what I would implore the council to do is to stick to your guns, we certainly appreciate it, over 588 hookups for the City of Lancaster, to take us under their wing. And Mr. Hickling to be here, it's just, the support is fantastic, we appreciate it very much. The one thing I would really push for the City of Lancaster is, there is no solution with 588 hookups to be able to have at a service area. It doesn't work. So in the meeting tomorrow with Senator Knight, you know, we're attempting to get it where it goes up to the state, because California water has to be stopped with this type of thing. When they, when they purchased this area, they didn't purchase the Lancaster area, what they bought was an area of water service in Long Beach. That was what they were after. And Lancaster's 588 hookups were kind of a throw-in, because the company, company owned it. They didn't want this initially, it was kind of thrown on them, and now it's like, whatever they can do to be able to reap the benefits of having it, I understand that, but at some point, you can't keep making the living off of our backs at 600 to 1,000 dollars a month, it's just not fair. So, let yourselves be absorbed, you know, you'll get out of here with a couple of million dollars, take it, go to your, to the bigger things, it's all good.
I want to talk to your CEO. Tell him that he'd much rather come talk to us here than have me take his deposition. We've heard that's a life-changing experience for some people. I'm serious.
I'll pass the message along, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Before you start, Michelle, you know what David said? How do you refute that? You know, you, you, it's unfair to use the power of the government to force people to pay a price that is so out of bounds with every other price. I mean, it, it makes no sense to me. It has to make no sense to you.
Any answer I give, I think would be the later points that have already been made, and I, I don't want to say timely for our, our residents who came out here and took their time.
They're, they're going to get their time. But I understand, there really isn't an answer.
Again, the issue is the number of connections that we have here versus-
But I thought what David said made sense. You bought a business with not enough customers, why should the government help you make money?
I'm confused by your question, I'm sorry.
Well, you used the PUC to get the rate increases, and they're forced to pay it, right?
If no other in every other utility that's the same situation, if the city council controlled the water system, the water, the Water Works District would be using the force of government to get people to pay the rate that is set by the council? It's the same with any, with any use of it?
No, it's 500 people. You bought a small, a small group, knowing, knowing that it was not sustainable. Right?
I don't agree with that statement, no, sir.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Michelle.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having us here. Please bear with me. I've got a note about this meeting last night. So, I've kind of got some chicken scratch going on. First and foremost, I'm a single mom. I have 1,400 12-foot house, three bedrooms, two kids at home, who've been gone most of the summer. My bill was $280. Now, I broke it down. Broke it down to what they say. Their CCF's equals 748 gallons. They say I use 72. That's 53,856 gallons in one month. How is that possible? Breaks down, break it down even further. Divided by 30 days, 1,800 gallons a day. I work all day. It's 1.25 gallons per minute with nobody home. They said, maybe you have a leak. I said, does the whole neighborhood have the same leak? Because the whole neighborhood has the same bill. I went out and took a picture of my meter yesterday. Please tell me how they read this four days ago.
Let me see that.
I have it on my iPad. My electronic, they try to fill it in.
It's going to be really painful, guys. Are you estimating bills?
If we estimate, we would say estimated bill.
If you look at the meter, which I did try to look at a little closer, I took pictures tonight as well.
Come on, but show me where they would say that.
On the bill.
Where at?
I took this tonight before I came. Just to see if you can back out and read it. So, even if you zoom it, please tell me how you read this. Can you, where you could have read that possibly? No. When you look at my bill? The CCF's.
Okay. Thank you. Michelle? I mean, I'll keep it, but...
I just, really quickly, I know my time is running out, but I want to touch on a couple of things that you talked about. How you don't have the customers in the district. How will you expect to get them with these prices? How will you get more customers? You can't. If you tell them that this is it, how do you expect to get more customers and our rates to go down? You say that your stuff has declined 25%. It will decline more if we can't sell our homes because you will lose those customers too. It's really frustrating to me as a single mom, when you say it's a $100 average bill. There's no way. Not one person in our neighborhood. And it's funny, you know? My parents bought this house in February. We had it water tested in January. No spots of any, many moisture. You guys started messing with our sewer down the street. Except funny how all of our bills skyrocketed.
Michelle, you're, Mark is right. You really have to talk to us.
I apologize.
Okay, that's okay. I do it in court all the time. The judge gets, you know...
I try to stay out of it as much as I can. Oh, and I do the code enforcement for a living.
Which brings me to a point. If all of these people quit paying their water bill, do we have the power to keep them from shutting off the water? Find out.
I will. I'll look into it.
Okay.
You know, when I did do a little checking just with our single bottled water, it's cheaper to buy and use than their water. If I bought the single bottled water, it breaks down to 63 cents a gallon versus what you charge.
What do they charge a gallon?
I'm sorry?
What do they average a gallon?
Um, no. No, it's not. When you break this down, it's not. And I don't know if I broke that part of it down. But that's...
Okay, okay. We're not going to, Michelle, we're not going to solve that now.
Yeah.
Norm, can we get the, can we get the Water Works for the, what is it, Water District 40? Could we get them to come out and sample, one sample whether or not their meters are correct?
I'd be glad to.
All right.
I'm sure they have to give permission, but I don't feel that would be...
Okay. But I want it done, I want it done a random sample.
See what I can do right away.
Okay. And let's put some meters on it, and let's find out, first of all, what our facts are. All right? And let's start building a case. All right?
Thank you for that.
Thank you. AB residents for reasonable water rates. ABRWR. Yeah, we could do better than that. It's too long.
I'll work with you next time. Anyway, like everybody else, I'm so thankful to be a resident of Lancaster. I am so thankful to be a resident of LA County where we have such support from our legislative leaders. I don't want to belabor a lot of points. I was out of town most of last month. I have no grass in the front. I have some, a little bit of desert scape in the front, very small amount of grass, tiny pool in the back. My water bill being out of town was $124 with nobody being home for three weeks. So, and no grass in the front. So, I think if we're starting to build a case here, one thing that we need to look at is that last year, the Assembly passed a bill, AB 685, and that bill says that every human being has the right to safe, clean, affordable, and accessible water. That's a state law. So, my question is, we've established this is not affordable for most people. The EPA has set an index for what's affordable. 2% to 2.5% of everybody's income in the area, we're paying 2.4% of our incomes right now for water. We're never going to get any lower than that. They're asking for rate increases every three years. So, my question is, we are coming to the point where it's going to have to be some sort of legislative action if they're not willing to sell us.
You are really smart.
Thank you, sir.
Let's look into an unfair business practice based upon a violation of that ordinance.
Okay.
All right? We might have it there. And I want to know if it's, if they're subject to a 17200 action.
Okay.
All right? Thank you.
And I am planning to attend the hearing with Senator Knight tomorrow. I know he's on the committee that regulates the CPUC that is allowing this to go on right now. And I plan to bring it up with him. And I think, you know, we have another advocate there. He's written letters on our behalf. And I think all working together, we can come to some solution, whether it's finally Cal Water realizing that this is unsustainable and selling us, or some other solution. But I thank everybody, and especially my neighbors, people who take their time, who pay their bills, and take their time to come here and to get involved. So, thank you.
Thank you. You know, I'm doing the count here. You guys are losing. You don't have anybody. Your entire customer base. Go on.
Hello, my name is Tom Miller. I've been in the same house on an acre since, well, 17 years. Set a personal high for myself at $515 last month, or this month. Last month was 500, 132 CCF's. That's 98,000 gallons. I know a little bit about the water because I, over my business, I have a 65,000 gallon tank with a well. And I thought the solution was for me to bring truck water over cheaper than these guys selling me water. But it doesn't really work out if I'm spending, if I'm going through 98,000 gallons a day, I mean, in a month. That's 3,200 gallons, say, in a day. The average home, see, I have water testing. So, the lady that does my water testing kind of gives me the insight on what you can kind of expect. And she says, if you've got a 200, if you've got somebody in the house, you can pretty much figure you're going through 200 gallons of water per day. So, even if you're saving at this, the way they're doing this, it doesn't encourage you to go to zero scape or whatever because they're charging you for it anyway. I myself took it upon, I took it upon myself to go over to Quartz Hill Water District and just ask them, hey, what can you do for us? Desert roads is a stone throw away. And as I was passing through there in my golf cart, I asked the guy, what do you pay for water over here? He says, $160 is what his bill was last month. I said, well, mine was $555. And he goes, wow, I'm glad I'm over here. So, I'm seeing, you know, a little bit of blight in our area because people are turning off the water, and they're kind of going to this, I'm not going to water this area of my lawn type thing. I think we need to, when I went over to Quartz Hill, I asked them, I said, could you take us on? And why wouldn't you take us on? Well, they're a community water district. They're not going to solicit it. There's a lot of things. He says, how did you become, how did you get away from Dominguez Water to Quartz Hill Water, I mean, to Cal Water? And I said, I don't really know, but it's been some time. But he says, that would be kind of of interest. I don't really know where he was going with that. Also, I don't know if this, if they're buying water from the aqueduct and stockpiling this water, guaranteeing a mountain of money every month that they're going to pay Cal Water, maybe that's part of their problem. They're buying water, and we're not using it as fast as they want us to, so they're charging a RAM charge. So, maybe it's just their business practices are not that good. So, and their service is terrible. I mean, I was the guy who was here last time where they backfed a hose across my last spigot for three months and then told me, you know, you got your $2,000 bill. I guess it really wasn't the pressure regulator that I replaced on their, what they suggested to me. They gave me $400 back for the pressure regulator, and that was it. Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Scott Lynch. Under his, subject to be addressed, he puts Cal Water crooks. And I'm not bringing that up for the mirth of it. I want you to go back to your CEO and tell him he's got a problem building here.
You have my assurance, Mayor Perez. I will.
Okay.
This evening.
These are not whack jobs. These are the core of this community that are writing this stuff. Okay? Thank you.
Howdy, Mr. Mayor.
Hi.
Mr. Christ, Mr. Mann, Mr. Smith, and Ms. Harvey. Howdy, Jared. I just, at this point, I can't fight any better than what you guys have. I've never been involved with anything such as to do with city matter like this. I've been in my home 17 years as well with my neighbor, Michelle. And at this point, I'm just going to reiterate a couple of things that I can't believe you have the guts to say, as in your termination of your sales.
Talk to us. Talk to us.
As decline in sales, you mean, we're just conserving like you've asked us to for the last three or four years. It's not so much even about the increase. It's the principle of what you're doing to us and the rates you're applying. And in the 17 years I've been in my neighborhood, there's probably, I'm going to say, 150 homes in our track. I know most of my neighbors. I've never heard of one less than $150 a month. So, to hear you say that, you know, the average bill's $100 a month, that is bogus. That's a straight-out flat lie. Last thing I'd just like to make everyone know is, I've been in this position where I wasn't able to pay my water bill one month. And the grouchy ladies up north, where there's three ladies in a building that you call because you don't talk to anyone down here, she literally said, figure out how to pay it. I'll shut you off by X amount of date. So, his whole speech of they don't want to turn me off, they don't work with you. I've been there. You know, I've literally not been able to pay my bill, and the entire company is just a sham. You know, it's 17 years in the house, and I can't believe I have $200, $300 water bills for a tiny, tiny little 1,200 square foot house in Lancaster. But I'm proud to be a citizen of your city. Thank you very much.
Allison. If they're violating the statute in regards to affordable water, couldn't we enjoin them from turning off the water?
I will look into it.
All right. Also, I would like you guys to prepare a two-page summary and do it in like a request for proposal. And then get ahold of Kitty, and she will give you the names of, what, five class action firms. And let's send it to them. From the city to them soliciting a proposal. All right?
Okay.
Thank you. And that's a first. That's never been done in the history of class action warfare. Liz...
Diane.
Come on up. You put all this together?
Kirsten and I did. She went on vacation last month, so I was, I was filling in. So, I'm glad she's back. First of all, thank you for having me. And thank you for all of the work that you've put into this. As a community, we're really appreciative. I think you've heard all the facts. You've seen how obviously disgusted we are with Cal Water, with the rates, with the service, things like that. The one thing I want to point out, and this is the thing that, actually, I think I got smoked up about this once before in a meeting with you, is the issue of conservation. Cal Water, in one breath, says, well, we're charging RAM charges because of a decrease in sales. That's conservation. As a district, we've conserved 25% over the last three years. That's good. We should be rewarded for that. We are not. We're charged more. They talk about how high our average usage is and how we're using so much water in compared to their other customers. That is in comparison to other customers in other areas of the state. People who don't live in, say, a desert. That's compared to people who are in urban areas, who don't have front yards, backyards, a tree. Those comparisons are not to other Antelope Valley residents. And we are in line with other Antelope Valley residents. Only 3% of their costs are the actual water. The rest, 97%, are fixed cost. They're going to continue to go up, and they are going to continue to be divided among 688 residents. It's unsustainable. And quite frankly, Cal Water is right. We're too small. We're never going to have affordable water. And if we were way up in the mountains, somewhere way far away, fine. Maybe that's what we have to do. I can hear the 14 freeway from my house. I could probably throw a stick and hit a different water company. I can see Quartz Hill. I can see LA County Water Works. It just doesn't logically make sense for our area. And we are doing what we can. We're conserving. In the long run, it's not going to matter. Our bills are going to continue to go up. It's purely and simply unsustainable.
Thank you. Okay, that brings a conclusion to the speakers. Get ready for a ride. I think this, you know, we might as well be the first in this. But I, yeah, come on up.
An idea that's really simple.
Come on. Take the mic.
It seems like that chart right there, if they would just level their profits with everybody else, then they wouldn't have to have much discussion, then everybody would be much happier.
Yeah, but we need them to pay these lawyers that are going to come into this. All right. We got anything we got to do on this?
No.
Okay.
Do they want to rebut anything?
I don't think they want to rebut anything. I think they realize where they are. You know, tell the guy who owns this, he's got a freight train coming at him. Whether he believes it or not, he's got a freight train coming at him. All right?
I will send the message this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Bye-bye. We have the vote totals. And it was remarkably similar to the last election in Lancaster. 73.22% in favor, 26.78% against. It passed.
So, now the council needs to consider if anyone would like to make a motion to adopt the P bid as set forth in Resolution 13-44.
Senator Moser?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 13-44.
Let's get the second, and then I'll have, I'll open a discussion.
I'll take that.
Okay. Ken?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we have on the record, I think there was at the beginning here, that has been said at several historical meetings, that somehow there's a misconception that it's the council that is enacting some kind of either tariff or tax on the Boulevard, and that's really not the case. This is self-imposed, and all we're doing is ratifying their vote and creating the mechanism for collection purposes. That's my understanding. Is that not right, Allison?
That is correct, Councilmember Mann.
I just, I just don't want anybody to get the impression that this council is in a position where on some kind of regular basis that somehow they're enacting taxes on... on citizens of Lancaster, because I just don't believe that's within our DNA up here. I just don't, I don't see this. Historically, we've actually resisted that. So, anyway, I just wanted to make sure that was said before we take the vote.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Let's vote.
Do we have to close the public? We did?
He already closed the public hearing.
Okay, it passes. Moving on to the consent calendar, it's item five after we move, is that it?
I think we have the power.
Yes, sir, I believe you have. We're in the power authority, okay. Any speaker cards?
Are we on the consent calendar, Mayor Paris?
Yes, of the power authority.
Power authority. I'm speaking on CC5.
No, this is.
Is that right?
PACC1.
Okay, thank you.
Michael, it's the one that amends the ground lease with Topco Energy.
Right, thank you. Thank you very much. I want to say that I don't favor any lease with Topco Energy, as you well know. I've proposed every solar project the city has proposed, as well as the power plant of our city to the south, because I don't believe that the city should be involved in the power business. However, in this particular lease, I don't favor giving Topco any additional acreage because someone else forfeited their acreage. And one of the things that bothers me is, this is the attachment in the agenda, and it doesn't tell me anything about this. It's very vague, and this is a legal document. There's no reason that the city cannot scan, along with the agenda, a more detailed description of the terms of this lease. Instead of having a vague, two-page thing, one page of signatures, we should have a more complete attachment that will explain the terms of the lease. You do it on other things. I think that another one, we just have a map. That's a complaint about the agenda. But however, I don't favor any additional leases with Topco Energy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves. On the, on these, I think he has a good point in regards to how much information we provide. I want to make certain that we are scanning as much as we are allowed to.
The document.
Making it available. I'm sorry, just making it available.
Sure, the entirety of the lease amendment was scanned and included.
Okay, thank you.
Also, Mayor Paris, if I might, I agree with you. Michael Reeves had a point. You'll notice since he made a comment about a year ago, we've been much, had much more descriptive on the agenda face itself, too. So we try every time we do to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move we approve PACC1, PACC2.
I'll second that motion.
On this, wait a minute.
The council additions.
Yeah, to approve the amendments of the City Council Successor Agency Financing Power Authority, regular minutes of July 9th, 2013.
Second.
Can we do that again?
Neither one, neither Ron or I was here, so we can't vote. Do we need, do we need?
If you weren't present, you'll need to abstain.
Right, so can two people pass it?
No, we'll need, we'll need a majority of those present at the council meeting at which the vote is taken in order to pass it.
Just defer it to them.
So it'll need to be deferred.
Okay.
Now, if you have two people, you do have a majority of the people at the meeting.
Not at this meeting. We don't have a majority of the number of council members here today.
I see, I see.
Four council members, that two is not a majority.
All right, I understand.
We don't need a motion to defer it, then, do we? Or we do?
No, you don't need a motion to defer it. We just put it over.
Okay.
Okay, let's take CC5 off. I'm going to recuse myself on that, because I own property in the proximity of the project.
Motion to approve the consent calendar is currently comprised?
Without CC5.
Without CC5.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Passes unanimously.
Do I have a motion and second on CC5?
I'll move that we award the Public Works Construction Project Number 10-022.
Second.
Is there a speaker card on CC5?
We, we didn't vote. Michael Reeves.
I have a couple of comments on this CC5. Apparently, we're getting a, it's going to cost a million dollars to do this job, and we're getting a grant in the amount of $450,000. So that leaves a difference that the city is making up. And I thought, I understood that the city wasn't going to spend any money this year on capital improvements, and that we were going to use grants and so forth. So here we are. Are we using old funds or what to supplement this? Another thing I want to point out, though, is this money's going to be used for streetlighting, sidewalk fill-in, curbs and gutters and stuff, and bike lanes. The situation with the bike lanes, we have bike lanes all over the city, and I don't see anybody using them. Maybe I'm in the wrong part of town. Maybe on the west side, further on the west side toward Quartz Hill, they're using bike lanes. But I don't see them in the central city using bike lanes. And there are some parts of this city, you wouldn't use bike lanes. So I think there should be a moratorium on bike lanes for a while, till we see if the citizens are actually using bike lanes. And rather use, using some of this grant money and our money to improve this area, which it probably needs. Let's, let's not build any more bike lanes, till we take a survey and see if they're being utilized by the citizens. Let's just don't take money because we're going to build bike lanes. Most disastrous bike lane is on Valley Central Way. That's a total fiasco. We took money and we destroyed that street, and the drivers are constantly confused when they go over there to Walmart in that area. That's a disgrace. It should be put back to two lanes the way it was. I have never seen one person ride on that green bike lane of all the times I've been there. And just because someone offers the money, we built it, and it's a disaster. Thank you.
Any comments? Motion and a second? Let's do it again.
I'll move that we accept the award, the Public Works Construction Project 10-022.
Second.
Let's vote. That was a trick, taking my gentleman. Okay, public hearing, item number two. Any speaker cards?
We don't have any speaker cards on two, we do on three.
Okay, you want to wave the presentation?
We need to open a public hearing?
We just did, didn't we?
Yes.
We just opened the public hearing.
Did you say you opened the public hearing? I didn't hear that, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we open the public hearing.
Very good. And if there are no public speakers, then you may close the public hearing, if that's your decision.
Close, let's vote.
Hang on, let's call for the motion, then.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 13-45.
Second.
Let's vote. Item number three. Let's open the public hearing. One speaker card.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Deputy Mayor Harvey. The item before you is to declare an intention to set up an undergrounding district on Avenue I between 20th Street West and 10th Street West. We have been working with Edison to use Rule 28 credit to do undergrounding along Avenue I. It's part of a much bigger project that we have been working on. 2011, the city was successful in obtaining a transportation enhancement grant to fund a first phase of streetscape improvements along Avenue I between 10th Street West and 15th Street West. The construction of that is intended to start in fiscal year 1516. This is preliminary work that would be done in advance of those public improvements. The stretch that we're talking about along Avenue I, we consider as part of our north, northern gateway to the core of our city from State Route 14. The, it's, it's been designed in accordance with our current master plan of trails and bikeways. And therefore, our project includes landscaping, bike paths, buffer lanes, road diets, sidewalk improvements, new bus stop improvements, center median improvements, and ADA improvements. This is what is being proposed between, on Avenue I between 10th Street West and 13th Street West. It includes a raised landscape median, the pavement rehabilitation, resloping of a problem lane, five-foot bike lane, seven-foot wide parallel parking for businesses, and sidewalk modifications to accommodate planters and street trees. Between 13th Street West and 15th Street West, we also have raised mediums. On the south side, we have pavement rehabilitation, resloping, a six-foot buffer lane, a five-foot bike lane, and sidewalks modifications to accommodate street trees. On the north side, similar types of improvements, however it recognizes the frontage road. So let me just talk really briefly about the, this undergrounding district. It's being done in anticipation of that much larger project that'll start in 1516. The district boundaries are, as shown on this map, it's consistent with our general plan under Policy 19.2.5, recognizing the importance of attractive corridors that are safe for a variety of users, including pedestrians, transit users, and bicyclists. It's consistent with a study that was done by C.D. Richard Ellis in 2010 about improving the appearance of our major corridors. It's also consistent with three separate studies, the Northeast Gateway Corridor Project, the North Downtown Transit Village Vision Plan, and the Desert View Neighborhood Vision Plan for aesthetic improvements along this corridor. The total project for the undergrounding portion is about $3.6 million. Edison would use Rule 28 work order, work credit that we receive. Our current allocation is $2.3 million. Every year, we get an allocation of roughly $260,000. So, working with Edison, they've agreed to allow us to reach about five years into the future with, under our Rule 28 allocations, in order to get this project going. If we, if we move forward, all the poles would be removed, all the undergrounding would be done in preparation for a project. This work would be completed by December 31st, 2015. I'm going to stop there, answer questions, and...
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Michael Reeves.
Well, instead of creating the underground utility district, we ought to create a bulldozer district to go down on Avenue I. That would improve the area before we put in mediums and bus stops. I mean, come on, you're going to build underground utilities, and then later on, we're going to, we're going to landscape the place and stuff. The place needs to be bulldozed from that area and cleared out before you do anything. I wouldn't waste my time saving the money, using the money for this, and then you're going to improve it with a bike path, and who's going to ride on a bike path on Avenue I, for heaven's sake? Bus stop improvements, that would be good. Centerline mediums might be good. But why try to improve something that you need to bulldoze and use urban renewal on? Thank you.
The people living there might get a little upset about the bulldozers. Okay. Close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I'll move we adopt Resolution Number 13-46.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's vote. Passes unanimously. New business item one, any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards.
Let's waive the staff report. Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt Resolution 13-47.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Let's vote. Vice Mayor Chris.
Council report on the board of directors for the ABTA. We did our strategic planning. We were able to send out an RFP for bids for two electric buses. We're also doing, I believe, a consortium with a option for 80 buses for that. We also are taking a look at making a bus rapid transit district from 10th Street, from the mall to Lancaster Boulevard, which would bypass the lights, which would, you know, be in conjunction with the lights. So we're taking a look at that. It's on our three-year plan. So everything's looking good, and looking into the future, and trying to get some BYD buses.
Thank you. It's been brought to my attention that when the Sheriff's Department has to impound a car, that, and, correct me if I'm wrong with this, that if there's passengers in the car, they have to walk home, or if they have to find transportation. Is that right? What I would like you to do is see if there's transportation funds, and if we can coordinate with the Sheriff's Department, that if the people involved meet certain parameters, primarily age and disability parameters, that...
We could give them a taxi voucher.
Well, we just get them home, okay? Can we do that? And I think we have transportation funds that we would provide for that. But I do not want kids walking home, for obvious reasons. But I also understand that, you know, the deputies, they don't have a procedure for it. There's nothing they can do about it. So let's figure out a procedure, okay? Does that work for everybody? Good, thank you.
Look into it.
Thank you.
No action on the Financing Authority, no action on the Housing Authority, no action on the Successor Agency. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
Three quick ones. One, I'd like to commend Kelvin and Chin, and in particular, our staff, on the P-bid, working with the Boulevard. I'm so enthused that the Boulevard businesses that have had $30,000 to work with each year now have a $250,000 budget, and can't wait to see what they're gonna do with that.
Of their own money.
Of their own money. You mean, we don't get to spend it? No.[665.29][665.29](laughter)
That's a good thing.
Number two, also, our staff, I think, has done a good job with the Oversight Board. We were able to present a draft of the Property Management Plan, which is over 300 properties, to the Oversight Board a week ago. That will go back to the Oversight Board for approval in August. It will also come to the Successor Agency, and then go to the Department of Finance. And if we're able to get that through the Department of Finance, then we'll be able to work with the properties the city owns for either economic development purposes, public purposes, et cetera. So that was a large milestone. Oversight Board doesn't get a lot of credit, but they're working very, very hard. And lastly, and it's someone on a personal note, but on a business known as well too, Cobble Bank or Bozigan Realty, which has been a business in the community for decades, will be closing on Thursday, this coming Thursday. Their owners are going on to other pursuits, and they've been a longtime business, and for full disclosure, it's my dad and my uncles and my mom's company.
Thank you.
Must be a disappointment when your children don't take over the family business.
My son's gonna take over my family business. He'll be here in about 10 years.[743.82][743.82](laughter)
I couldn't help it. I just, you know, there's no filters, what can I say? Okay, I wanna deal with the Stan Muhammad issue. I have three speaker cards on that issue. Are there any others? Well, you don't know who I'm talking about, do you? Brandon Zavala, Pharoah Mitchell, and Joanne...
Granai.
Yeah, okay. Any others? And David Paul. Okay, let me, I'll put David Paul in there. Okay, Joanne, you wanna start?
Hello, my name's Joanne Granai. I am a former Commissioner for the LA County Commission on HIV. I am also a former member of the past AD Human Relations Task Force. I am also a member of the lesbian gay community. We had a few children here speaking earlier today in regards to African-American history, and their ability to learn it, and the things that they've gone through, and one little girl said, "If it wasn't for, you know, the fight that we put up," she said that she wouldn't be able to be here right now, today, speaking. Well, I'd like to say that the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer questioning, and all the other outlets, we've all, we have our history too. We're fighting for our civil rights right now. You know, and it's an emotional thing for me, because I have been in this fight. My mother came out when I was nine years old, okay? So I've been around for many things. I wanna say that I would like to see you, Mr. Paris, Mayor Paris, holding your Commissioners to the same standards as a gentleman in another city council that made a disparaging comment, in your opinion, and took it straight to deposition in regards to a comment that he had made online. And without bringing it up, I know you know what I'm talking about. I wanna say that I was a little disappointed, as well as your opening joke. I am a very thick-skinned person, but the sensitivity of the moment for some of us, I thought it was inappropriate. That's just me. The Outreach Center has issued a letter, and I read it while I was here, it just came out here, and it requested, after the meeting, it was something that they did after they had the meeting with Mr. Muhammad, and they requested a sit-down, you know, some training. Anyways, I have an issue with Soudell making, putting the Chair of the Tapestry Commission on it, because the Tapestry Commission is a commission. She's a Commissioner for the City-Ran Tapestry, which is, he's this Commissioner for a City-Ran Commission over here. There's a conflict, okay? I think, because no, they're not gonna speak out against their own people, okay, and the Commissions. All I'm asking is this: if there's going to be training, that Mr. Muhammad be removed from his position as Commissioner until such a time when that is completed, and then he can request to come back in. I think that's fair, and I think it's just. I'm not saying, everybody makes mistakes, and everybody says, you know, has their moments. I think it's fair to ask him to step down. I think it's just until at least training has been had. And I'm not an unfair person. I'm not a mean person. I was hurt, and I love the Outreach Center, but they don't speak for all of us. That's not an elected position, and as a member of the community, I'm asking for that much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pharoah Mitchell?
It is absolutely wild to be standing in front of you guys again, Mayor Paris and City Council. People make mistakes. The sad part about is to make a mistake and not admit it. This man made a mistake, and he admitted it. He made apology the same day. Who are we not to forgive this man for apology? We've all made mistakes. Are we so small as a human race not to forgive people for their mistakes? I talked to Stan, and as she said, he did talk to the community, and they did make an atonement with each other, and they did forgive each other. I talked to Veronica, who's an advocate for this community, and she's a beautiful person, and I'm 100% behind her. She's one of our youth leaders, and she's deeply hurt by this. The point that Brother Stan, Commissioner Stan, was making is about these rappers who are destroying our communities by teaching our youth to disrespect women in our community. These rapper...
Pharoah, you know I like you.
Yes.
It is inexcusable. Don't make an excuse.
I'm not making an excuse.
It doesn't matter what he was talking about. It is inexcusable.
It is, it is.
And I'm just cautioning you, perhaps, I mean, nobody runs off at the mouth more than I do.
True.
Right? I understand that, and I understand the heat he's experiencing, but it is a mistake for us to put any type of excuse to this whatsoever. And, you know, I've met with Stan for hours, and when we had this part of the discussion, I said, "Imagine if I had said the N-word," and then tried to explain why I did it. There is no explanation. Sometimes we just do something that's bad, and when we do something that's bad, the only thing to do is acknowledge it, and ask for forgiveness, and tell people what you're going to do to fix it.
And move on.
And I think Stan has done that.
Exactly.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just don't wanna see that mistake made today.
I understand that, and then I won't speak on his behalf, then I'll speak on my behalf, about these rappers who are destroying our community and don't destroying the families.
And I agree with you on that.
So I'm speaking on my behalf. And on my behalf is, these rappers are destroying our communities by teaching our youth to disrespect each other, and disrespect the black family, the white family, the whole family unit, and the African-American race is becoming extinct because of negative things that's happening and disrespecting our community. So that's the point that I'm making here. I'm not making an excuse for him. I'm speaking on behalf of myself. Something that, now, getting back to that point, something as great as the Youth Ambassador program is being overshadowed by a mistake, and this is a mistake by all of us. This is something that's gonna be great for our youth, and we need to focus on that and not continue to focus on a mistake, because we all are borrowing this planet from our youth, and we have to be responsible for making this a better place for our youth. That's my point. Let's not overshadow the Youth Ambassador Program by a mistake made by one person. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Pharoah. Brandon Zavala?
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Chris, members of the City Council, Deputy Mayor Harvey. My name is Brandon Zavala. I've been a resident of the Antelope Valley my entire life. I'm 20 years old. I studied political science at Antelope Valley College, and helping people is the cornerstone of my life. I was born to a father who came to this country when he was 19, when he was my age. My parents tell me about their first refrigerator was a Styrofoam box, and how they strived and spent every moment of their life working hard. And when I was 12 years old, my father became a single father, and my mother tragically died. And he raised me in the same spirit and ethos of being a human being, and being humble, and being respectful, and being accountable for your actions. And going forward, that has resonated with me and my brother, my brother being a Custody's Assistant with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. I helped to organize this event last Saturday, where Commissioner Muhammad made his comments. My father and my brother don't know I'm gay, but I'm here in a public forum to say that I am, and that I have to go home tonight and explain to my father that I am. But it means so much to me that I need to be here, because I dedicated my life to helping people. That's why I study political science. It's, I want to make the world a better place, because, you know, one of the things that I relied on when my mother died was, you know, was my religion, growing up, being Roman Catholic, and I was going through my Bible last night, and it says that, "For they will not say 'Here it is,' or 'There it is,' for the kingdom of heaven lies within you." The change you wanna see in this world is to, you have to be it. You have to be loving and compassionate. And I organized an event for a 17-year-old boy I never met. And at that event, I spent my entire week, it's summer vacation, I spent my entire week dedicated towards organizing an event, and during that event, I was reduced. Everything, the love my mother had for me, the love my father has for me, the man that I am, was reduced to six letters, six characters. You know, I believe in apologies. I do, but my father also taught me, in the spirit of my mother, that you are also accountable and liable for those statements, and for your actions, and for what you say. You have to take the responsibility and say, "I deserve the full, wholehearted punishment of what I said, because it's required of me. It's the oath I take as a human being to say that I have harmed someone else." Mr. Mayor, I want Stan Muhammad to resign because, no, for malicious intent, not because I'm angry at him. I forgave him for what he said seconds after he made the comment, because that's the person I am, to be compassionate and forgiving, because to belittle myself to his level, to fill myself with the same hate and anger, because even during his apology he made, and continuing his talk about the music industry, he referred to those people as worshiping in a synagogue of Satan. Mr. Mayor...
Brandon, I'm violating the rules. You have to wrap it.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I call upon you to do this not out of spite, or anger, or resentment, but out of talking about that we, as a city, cannot allow and tolerate intolerance by our own government to our own people. Thank you.
Thank you. David Paul?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, good evening. I was fortunate enough to be a guest speaker at the Community Prayer and Call to Action Meeting on Saturday. I had to speak after Commissioner Muhammad made his remarks, and I did the best I can to hold true to what I believe. You can watch that on YouTube, David Paul and Lancaster search, and it's six good minutes. It was a wonderful event, and I don't feel that the comments diminished it at all, because so much was accomplished there. There was a sense of unity in people coming together and grieving and celebrating, and it was actually a wonderful event. And that's my main concern, that nothing diminish what was accomplished there and what goes forward from there. You know, I was born and raised in Chicago, and I am not unfamiliar with black Muslims. I have worked with some men that I had a friendship with, and I know that I am the epitome of the blue-eyed, white-haired devil, but, you know, if someone thinks that about me and says it, I appreciate that more than not revealing what they really feel. And I think that working together, it gives us a way forward for hope. During all the civil rights rallies and talking about Martin Luther King, and Bobby Kennedy, and Jack Kennedy, Malcolm X is left out far too often. Malcolm X was a great man who went through a transition to self-awareness. He benefited from what he had learned and took it to the next level, and it's unfortunate he didn't live long enough to do that. But, you know, I know that the black Muslims do a lot of good work. The young man that was here today without a parent, that's what's wrong, and so I would much prefer someone find acceptance within a group that teaches you to read, and dress right, and be respectful than a street gang. But what is greater than that? Well, unity. And that's what Malcolm X found at the end of his life through his troubles. So, we can get there. I've been to the Outreach Center, and I've joked around with a few of the guys, and I've used some words that they understood. They were jokes. Words matter, but what words mean matter more. And they know that I don't mean them, because I've stood on the street with a sign, supporting them on K and 15th West, and it's just my thought that if Stan really wants to redeem himself, he should stand out there with a sign next time with them, and say, "I'm with these people, and I don't hate them." And that would be a sign that would help quite a bit. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any comments?
I'm not touching.
I am. First of all, let's be clear about something. I don't have the authority to kick anybody off a commission. I nominate them, the Council approves them. Any one of us can do a motion to remove somebody, and the Council as a whole can remove them. I have no intention of bringing that motion. The thing I attempted to achieve was to bring as many elements of this community together and empower them, and that's why those Commissions have as much power as they have. When they ask me to do something, 95% of the time, I do it, even when I disagree with it, because I think a thriving community is an empowered community. If you wanna give me the power to start eliminating people from any input into this city because I disagree with what they say, you are not going to like the city we have, and neither am I. The point is, is that regardless of how extreme somebody might talk, and now I don't wanna say that, because they could be too extreme, and I think Stan pushed it right to the edge. And had this been a second time, it would have been over the edge. I mean, I think what he said was deplorable. I think it was inexcusable. But I also don't think it's my role to tell people what they can say. There has been one Commissioner I have removed by asking this Council to remove him, and that was because he solicited a bribe from a developer. And when we questioned... And when we questioned him about whether or not he solicited that bribe, Mark was in the room, he took the fifth and refused to answer any of my questions without a lawyer. That was enough for me to remove him. It's because of what he did, not because of what he said. Now, when people come back up for reappointments, I do consider how extreme they might be, whether or not I want to reappoint them. In this case, I am anxious to see what Stan does in an effort to fix this thing he created. You know, Joan, I can't imagine, I can't imagine what it must be like to be a young gay man and hear that. I just can't. I mean, it is so filled with contempt that I just can't imagine it. I can't hear you, I'm sorry. Yeah, I guess it was, not as much, because it is a male word. It doesn't apply to lesbians, not as much. Sue Dell, I want you to know, was on the phone to me within an hour screaming at me. Well, maybe not screaming, but she was talking really loud, demanding that I get rid of him in some fashion. I mean, it was an hour-long discussion. I mean, I don't think Sue is taking this lightly. She is not. But he did not do it as a commissioner. He did it as Stan Mohammed. He did not introduce himself as representing the city. It was not in his role as a commissioner. I've got commissioners that think Obama's a communist. Couple of them might even be on this council, not sure. But I certainly have commissioners that say it. Do I get rid of them? People have asked me to. Do we start allowing me to decide what people can believe and say and think? That's a slippery slope nobody, none of you want to go down. I mean, I can be real dictatorial at times. I think that once we stop and think about it, we see another solution. And I'm, as angry as I am at Stan for doing this, because I really think he let me down. I really do. I mean, I was stretching with putting him on a commission. As angry as I am at him for it, I'm also as proud of him for how he has stepped up and freely admitted what he did was inexcusable, and he is willing to do anything to fix it. I didn't expect that. I mean, Stan's a pretty proud guy. I expected resistance. I expected him to, even if he knew he was wrong, to, you know, too bad. I didn't get any of that. I got humility. I think this is an opportunity. It's an opportunity for people in this community to recognize that when you say that word out loud in front of people who may be gay, you are inflicting an injury that is severe, and we should just get it out of our vocabulary. We wouldn't be having this discussion if that had not happened. It's an opportunity. I think Sani was correct. It is an opportunity to, for people to feel what it's like to be somebody else. I thought you presented it very well in that regard. I am a little upset that Veronica, what's her last name? Where is she? She issues a press release demanding that I remove somebody from a commission. She didn't call me. She didn't send me a letter. She didn't come here and do it. And what I see is somebody using this for their own self-aggrandizement. And that is one path, well, I'm not going down. I'm just not. And I don't think that the outreach folks are going down that either. This is not about using something all of us wish hadn't happened in order to elevate somebody else politically. And that's what I see occurring with that particular individual, who, if I've met her, I don't remember meeting her. She should have been here. I'm behind you, I'm telling Phil. That is an option that Stan has to take advantage of. It's not something I can force him to do, nor am I willing to force him to do it. For what it's worth, my wife and I were up for about three hours last night, and she agrees with you, and I was unable to persuade her to agree with me. It is a divisive issue. I do like the idea of making sensitivity-attracting available to all of the commissioners, all of them, and perhaps even to me, and to the council, because perhaps I shouldn't have made that crack when I opened up about is Stan going to be speaking. I also think that we need to lighten up a little bit in this community and recognize we're all going to make a lot of mistakes, and that we're doing something different in this city. We have really finally reached a point that there are so many things happening that are not happening anywhere else in the world, and you've got so few people managing it, and not one of them anticipated managing it, did you? I mean, it's revolutionary what's happening in this city on so many fronts, and we've just got to keep it a little light, because...
I said unblock me on Facebook.
Did I block you on Facebook? All right, I'll unblock you. Okay, all right. That's what I have to say about it. I want to adjourn to executive session, and we'll resume with the rest of the, what?
We have not yet done all of the public comment.
I know that.
Oh, okay.
I want to go to executive session. When they come back, they can do the rest of it. All right?
Do we have any speakers on any of the items in closed session? If we have a speaker on an item that's going into closed session, we'll need to do it first.
Not on there.
Okay, very good.
Okay, good. Oh, now, one of the revolutionary things we're doing is, we had the DCSF person here two, what, four weeks ago, on, you know, on the Department of Children's Services. They are now, they've given us 12 more caseworkers for this area, and they are making, and I think this was Supervisor Antonovich that did this, is they are seriously taking, interviewing and opening discussions as to whether or not the interview should be tape-recorded, and I think we may reach that point, which I think is a huge thing, that, you know, it's a huge change in the right direction. Ed, is the person I'm supposed to meet with here? Okay, so I don't have to do that tonight? Okay, let's set that up tomorrow then, okay? Okay, great. I'm sorry, you got to be louder. That's right, and that's what they, they sent me a letter saying, "These are the things we're doing differently." So we are making some progress. I'm not coming back, but they're coming back, and you can do it then, or you can just give me a call. Okay? Either way. Okay? Thank you.
In closed session, the council gave direction to legal counsel with regard to matters listed on the agenda, Courtsill Cares versus Lancaster, Lancaster versus Housing Authority of the County of Los Angeles, Antelope Valley Alloa Acts Association versus Lancaster, Rubin versus Lancaster, and Miracle Star Women's Recovering Community versus Lancaster.
Michael Reeves. Sorry we took so long.
Vice Mayor Chris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to speak tonight on the Department of Justice report, and I want to say that I reviewed the report, I took notes, I highlighted it, and I reviewed it. I was very disappointed, because I thought that the report, first of all, the investigation by the U.S. Department of Justice could have been a means of undoing any injustices that were committed in the administration of Section 8 program in the AIV. Instead, the report, in my opinion, turned into a witch hunt, looking for means to turn grievances into a racial incident, and so that the Department of Justice could use its authority. The report is filled with numerous inconsistencies, and, for example, on the front page of the report, it says the L.A. Sheriff Department policies we reviewed were in the most part consistent with constitutional policing. However, investigations show these policies are not consistently followed. And that's a pattern that was all through the report. They said that the Sheriff Department on Section 8 people were doing okay, but, you know, they could have done this. For example, on page seven of the report, it talks, though Sheriff Department's policies are generally consistent with constitutional policies, they talk about failures. They go back and forth all the time about, "Well, we did all right, but we didn't do all right." And then they're holding us accountable for what happened in the past. They admit that corrections have been made, but we're going to be held accountable for what happened in the past. The report has been, turned into a critique of the Sheriff's Department, not an investigation of Section 8 program. I didn't find any instance where somebody was physically and mentally harmed by the Sheriff's Department in a Section 8 case. I looked for it. You know, I wanted us to compensate somebody that had been injured. I didn't find any area in there where somebody had been physically and mentally injured that we could compensate. So I was very disappointed in the report. I thought it was schizophrenic and a disservice, and I hope that the city will not participate in a settlement, whatever is reached. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Andrew Nieto.
Welcome back. Thank you. I just want to start out by giving the deepest gratitude of my heart to this City Council for really coming to bat for such a small number of our citizens who are just being outrageously charged for their water rates. I'm absolutely proud of the way that this council has really gone out of its way to. It may not seem apparent to many in the public eye, but when you look at the actual results of what's happening in this city, it is absolutely in the favor of the citizens and their well-being, and I'm just proud of the way the city is going. I wanted to speak briefly on one subject and devote the rest of my time to another subject. The subject to speak briefly on is older neighborhoods and water ordinances. It is absolutely part and parcel of the fabric of older neighborhoods, that they have trees and grass lawns, and the other neighborhoods that have been around since the 1950s and older. And really, we are a very diverse city. It's one of the things I've always been proud of, of our city. We integrate urban, suburban, rural. We're all in one city altogether. And because we are such a diverse city, I don't think it's appropriate to have the same standards of appearance for every neighborhood in the city. And thus far, to my understanding, the city's done a pretty good job of accommodating that, so I just want to mention that older neighborhoods, where grass and trees are part of the very identity of those neighborhoods, should always be taken into consideration when coming up with water ordinances for the city. And then I'll devote the rest of my time to speaking on an issue that I am very passionate Even though I don't live there, it is the Avenue I corridor. I have seen so much revitalization done citywide, especially on the Boulevard, another project I'm very proud of, but I have seen very little done on Avenue I. I was very pleased tonight to find out about the street enhancements and utility changes that will be done along that corridor. But really, that is, aside from the Boulevard, Avenue I is a historic part of this city. A lot of businesses that are there have been there for a very long time, and they're part of the historical identity of this city. So I just really wish to stress for the city, remember Avenue I. Michael Reeves, in his comment, mentioned the phrase "urban renewal." We don't really think of that that often. Urban renewal in Lancaster? Absolutely. It goes to that same diversity of the city that I mentioned. We can apply specific ideas used elsewhere, in places like Los Angeles, New York, wherever, to specific areas, even within Lancaster. So please always remember Avenue I, and thank you for what you're already doing there.
Thank you, sir.
Hi there. I had several issues that I wanted to talk on tonight. Some of them you've already spoke, talked about, with the utilities situation. We're also having to move from our house, and I think a lot of the reasons for that involved the, saying anything about, I think I've come here before in front of you guys about that, with the problems with the electric, gas, water bills, and things like that, which I think is one of the reasons why we're being asked to move. So I kind of needed some help on that, which I know you guys could address some of that, and what's actually really going on with why we're having to pay these bills that are so expensive for other things that are going on in the city. And the other things that I wanted to, I mean, I'm hoping that someone can help us with that situation. I mean, like I said, I heard earlier, that it kind of sounds like you're trying to help with that. But that's a big issue about what's been going on with people being sick, for one, and the water being shut off, and now our electricity and gas bills being so high and things. So I only have like another week or something, a couple of weeks, in my place, so I was kind of hoping I could speak with someone on that. I'm not sure what to do to get an extension on that, or something that we can do to remember everything that we've spent and all the money that's been put out and stuff that now, like, why we're broke. Also, I was just going to say something.
I was going to ask Mr. Bozigan if he could have someone from the city talk with you.
Well, I've-
Is that what you wanted?
Well, I've been that route before. I already went in and spoke with them back when it was happening. They even had a so-called meeting up at our, up at our, where I live.
Specifically-
And when I went in and spoke on anything, it was like, they said that, you know, there's nothing they could do about any of that situation. Well, actually, I think that's why they said I was in trouble and started the thing with me having to move, is because I was trying to speak out and talk about the things that were going on, as far as a lot of people losing their houses because of these issues, with the expense of everything, and having to pay for certain, so much for certain things, like our gas and electric, and our water being shut off, and because, you know, our whole area back behind our house died, and us being sick, and just a lot of issues going on around there. And, do you want me to keep going with the other?
I don't, I, you asked to speak with someone, I was directing city manager-
Right. I know you asked-
To speak with you, you didn't want to do that.
I-
Specifically, who do you want to speak with, and when?
Well, an attorney would be nice, but, what? Yeah-
That's what we suggested, we, I'm sorry, we've had two or three meetings, we've suggested that, we've suggested talking to the utility companies-
You just said that they would do whatever they wanted to do.
I do agree with you that with your concern, you should talk to an attorney. We provided people who can do that for free.
If anybody comes out to check on that, you know, they just either change out the heater, or, you know, they did that when I was in home, or-
Okay, I'm going to direct you to talk to the city manager-
Well, but I said I have, and you just said they can do whatever they wanted to do, that, you know, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You know, with all these businesses.
Vice Mayor and Council, good evening. My name's Todd Ankeny. I'm a longtime Lancaster resident, been here since 1995. I'm an engineer, I work out at Edwards Air Force Base. The reason I wanted to come and speak tonight, this is my first time up here, but I actually had a comment about a comment that Mayor Paris made, that I heard on TV. had a comment about a comment that Mayor Paris made that I heard on TV. It just struck me, it was kind of bugging me, so I just wanted to come and address that on the subject of climate change. I don't know what event the mayor was at. This was probably a couple of months ago, some local event. And, you know, in his remarks, you know, to the audience there, he was, he says something to the effect that, you know, climate change is irrefutable and everybody knows it and we have to do things to turn it around. In my own research on the subject of global warming and climate change, I found that it's not what the alarmists would say it is. It's nothing truly to be concerned about. And I did want to provide information to the mayor and to the council if you're interested. I did put a website reference on the speaker card, because you don't have to take my word for the counter view to Mayor Paris's comment. But Bert Rutan, who lives in Mojave and is, you know, with Scale Composites, very smart man, he's one of the leading engineers in the world.
He's also Mayor Paris's pilot.
Okay, even better. Well, then he can talk to him directly.
There you go.
Bert Rutan, I found this a few years ago. He put this out, it's over 100 slides on the subject of an engineer's critique of global warming science. He shows in here that it's truly nothing to be worried about. The Earth has its cycles. It's all very, very well understood. The information put out by the alarmists that we're in this, you know, warming spike, it's all not happening. In fact, it's cooling. I think the mayor said something to the effect of all these scientists agree. Well, they don't all agree. In fact, over 31,000 scientists have said that they do not believe that man is causing climate change. So why does this matter? I just want public policy to be based on solid facts and science, sound science, not junk science. So I just wanted to provide this information to the mayor and to the council.
I will make sure he gets it. And again, it's his opinion and he feels very strongly on it. So thank you for your comments.
All right.
Appreciate it. Mr. Abber?
Mr. Chris, good evening, council, staff, and citizens of the left. We've got a letter here dated March the 4th from Congressman McKeon's office. Mr. Abber, thank you for contacting my office for information on the city's Lancaster law enforcement aerial platform system, LEAPs. As your congressman, it's my priority to assist you with anything within the jurisdiction of my elected office. My district representative, J.D. Kennedy, discussed your concerns regarding LEAPs with Leader Rico, City of Lancaster Public Safety Manager. Mr. Kennedy was informed that LEAPs has utilized to track wildfires, assist with coordination of community events, and to provide a quick response to and surveillance of 911 calls. It is important to note that in the time LEAPs has been used, Lancaster has experienced lower crime rates than prior to its inception. Mr. Gerico has assured my office that LEAPs is not being utilized as a spy plane, and specific measures have been taken to ensure that the footage collected by LEAPs is safe and secure. Mr. Kennedy also discussed with city officials the possibility of coordinating a time to discuss details of LEAPs with you. City of Lancaster is open to such a meeting, but has asked you to coordinate with the city directly. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact. I'm going to read you the Fourth Amendment to the Constitution. The right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated and no warrant shall issue but upon probable cause supported by oath or affirmation and particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized. So I have a couple of issues. The plane flies, it films into our backyards, that's unreasonable search. I'd like to hear from Allison or whoever wants to take this question. I've raised this question with Mr. Bozigan. I've raised it with other members, and I'm not getting anything. So I'm going to take a page out of the mayor's book. I'm going to ask for a moratorium here and now on LEAPs forthwith to stop that until I'm provided and the citizens of Lancaster are provided with a case history, some documentation that circumvents my Fourth Amendment to the Constitution. It is a spy plane, it is illegally flying and filming into all of our backyards. Some people like to get in this swimming pool with no clothes on, so forth and so on. The bottom line is, is, yeah, okay. I can appreciate the humor. The bottom line being, you know, it's time for this situation to be addressed. We, my understanding is we haven't paid for the plane yet, so nothing lost, nothing gained. So it's time to put a moratorium on this. If that's not the direction we want to go, then I guess my alternative would be to file an injunction and bring the people. There are several citizens in the community that share my sentiments. It's time to quit spying on the citizens of Lancaster. Tell me what the plane has done to make this a safer city. Nothing. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Abber. Council comments? You guys are quiet? Okay. We're going to adjourn the housing authority until Tuesday, August 13th, and we're going to adjourn the council meeting until Tuesday, August 13th at 5:00 p.m.